Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to Cattle Parish Commission's regular meeting. I would like to call this meeting to order at 3:35 PM and remind everyone, if you would, at this time, please silence your cellphones and govern yourselves accordingly. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Crackman. Here's absent Commissioner Greg Young.
Present.
Commissioner Thomas.
Present.
Commissioner John Paul Young.
Here.
Commissioner Burrell.
Here.
Commissioner Jones is absent. Commissioner Gage Watson.
Present.
Commissioner Blake.
Here.
Commissioner Atkins.
Here.
Commissioner Cothran.
Here.
Commissioner Lazarus.
Here.
And Commissioner Epperson.
Present.
All right, you have ten of twelve commissioners present. That does constitute a quorum.
Thank you so much, Mr. Clerk. We have a pretty lengthy agenda here, and I would like at this time to ask Commissioner Grace Ann Blake to provide us with the invocation, and Commissioner Vice President Ken Epperson, Sr., to do the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would, please stand.
Dear Heavenly Father, we ask you to open our hearts and our minds to help each one of us remember that we come to represent our community, to bless our community, to give hope to our community, and help everyone to use our voice from a place that helps others. We ask you, Lord, to forgive us each of our sins, to guide us in our ways in all that we do. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I would ask that all gentlemen would please remove your headgear. All gentlemen, please remove your headgear, face the flag. I will ask that all active military and veterans render the standard hand to brow salute. All others, right hand across your heart. And as we repeat the Pledge of Allegiance in unison, please remember our POWs and MIA's.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, commissioners. And before we move forward, the chair would like to yield to the parliamentarian.
Thank you, Madam President. I did want to make sure that we recognize our guests today. We have City Councilman Mr. Gary Brooks. We also have Mr. Quinnon from Congressman Cleo Fields' office, as well as former police juror from my District Three, Ms. Shirley Wills, who was the first female police juror in Cattle Parish Commission. Thank you all for joining us. It is indeed a pleasure to have you all with us. Before we begin, Madam President, before we open our public comments section, I would like to remind everyone of our rules. We do allot fifteen minutes, a total of fifteen minutes, for any one particular topic. So we do have a number of public comments today. I just wanted to remind those individuals that if you have any primary speakers to speak on behalf of your topic and your subject, to please organize in a fashion so that your primary speakers do speak. But once again, there is a collective total of fifteen minutes that will be allotted for each subject. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Parliamentarian. Mr. Clerk, next item, please.
Thank you very much. That brings us to agenda additions, where I believe we do have one potential agenda addition to consider today. Would you like me to go ahead and read that?
Yes, please.
Okay, that is a 4.1, which you could see on your electronic agendas, is a potential agenda addition to accept the recommendations for revisions to the NGO timeline and application. That is coming from the Appropriations Committee and the Economic Development Committee that had a meeting earlier today.
All right. At this time, I would like to open for public comments if there is anyone here to speak in favor or against adding this potential agenda addition item to accept the recommendations for revisions for the NGO timeline and application. CNN, I declare this public hearing closed. At this time, I have a motion from Commissioner John Paul Young and second by parliamentarian Victor Thomas. Commissioner Young, would you like to speak on your motion?
Yes, Madam President. Briefly, this is an agenda addition. I hope we can all unanimously vote to add it to the agenda. It's refinement and improvement based on staff recommendations of our application and application process for both appropriations and economic development. And we can discuss it further once it's on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Roy Burrell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you know, I had to leave before we finished discussing it. My question was, these revisions are actually for the 2026 year because we're already in the middle of our appropriations for this year, or should I say our supplemental of applications this year? Is that correct?
They will take effect in 2026, if they pass.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Burrell. Parliamentarian Thomas.
Didn't want to just remind our colleagues that this was for the updates regarding the application process and not for our separate issue regarding the media appropriations. This is for the recommendations that we received. Thank you.
Okay. I see no other discussion.
Commissioner Epperson, it looks like it didn't log your vote. If you could...
It's not coming up. I vote yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, and that motion does carry with unanimous support of twelve and support none in opposition, and that item will become 20.8 on your agenda. So it'll be a new business item.
Thank you. Next item, please.
And that brings us now to citizens' comments, where citizens who wish to address the commission on any issue other than zoning are asked to fill out a comment card. Those are in the foyer. I know we did run out at one point. We restocked it, and then they are returned in this box to my left here. Comments are limited to three minutes per person and fifteen minutes, as was stated before, for a total on each subject. Those comment cards that have been submitted already have been submitted to the president, where she will acknowledge the people who have requested to speak.
Okay. The first card that I have is Sheri Fleckenstein. Welcome. If you would, please state your name and address for the record.
Sorry, short people. My name is Sheri Fleckenstein. I live at 3234 Fairfield Avenue, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71104.
Thank you. You have three minutes.
Thank you, ma'am. I have the privilege of leading the Shreveport Free Mom Hugs Group. Everyone at an event becomes our kid, and we give high fives and hugs, but most of all, we listen. Our goal is to make our kids feel loved, seen, and accepted. By formally acknowledging Pride Month, the city of Shreveport can do the same thing. How did I get involved? Well, several Junes ago, my own child came out, and by chance, I'd heard of PFLAG and Pace. Luckily, someone from PFLAG answered my Facebook message plea. There was a mom on the end of the line. We spoke for a little while, and she told me that her child had left the area because of the lack of support in this area. This made me really sad because I want my child to stay. Shreveport has nurtured me. Shreveport has become my hometown, and I want it to be my kid's hometown, too. Several minutes later, someone from Pace answered my plea, and within just a few minutes, I had a support group for my child. So I was armed with information. A few days later, we went to that meeting, and I saw my child smile for the first time in months. Throughout the coming months, my child's depression lifted because they've had a place where they belonged. We were lucky, but so many other parents are not. Many of us have no idea where to go, especially in cities that do not support pride events. According to a survey by the Trevor Project in 2023, 39% of our LGBTQ youth consider suicide in the past year, including 46% of transgender and non-binary young people. More than two in 10 LGBTQ young people attempted suicide. Nearly half of all of our youth experience bullying, and the LGBTQ students who reported being bullied had three times greater odds of attempting suicide. These youth have a greater risk of suicide due to the lack of affirmation from society at large. Eighty-four percent of the youth surveyed wanted mental health care. Over half are not able to do this, and pride events such as Field Gay and Pride in the Park connect people to these services. This information keeps our youth alive, and Shreveport should want to be known as a city who's interested in keeping its youth alive. Can you imagine as a young person knowing your whole city affirms your existence? Can you imagine what that person would do for our city in the future? You know, I've never come to a pride event where I didn't feel accepted, informed, and affirmed. I would like the city of Shreveport to officially recognize Pride Month and to fully embody those ideals. Thank you.
The next card that I have, and just want to remind everyone, this is a collective of fifteen minutes, so please be mindful that that is also limited to three minutes per citizen.
Point of order, per our rules, if your name is called and you would like to yield for someone else that's speaking in affirmative of your issue, you are able to yield and defer to them as well. So just wanted to make sure that point of order was noted.
Thank you for your point.
Okay.
Mr. Nettles, welcome. You have three minutes after you state your name and address for the record.
Okay, my name is Mark Nettles, and I live at 748 Cecile, Shreveport.
Thank you.
Okay. I want to thank everyone here for this opportunity to speak. And first, I want to say that I believe every person in this room is imperfect. We're all just here trying to survive and enjoy each day. I also want to say I fully support the resolution to recognize Pride Month and continue supporting future events, allow LGBTQ+ individuals and their loved ones, living, breathing, human beings, all, to thrive in community. I was born and raised in Shreveport, and after moving away as a young adult for seven years, I returned with my family to raise my children among their grandparents, aunts, uncles, cousins, and old friends, and also to begin my second career here as a therapist for children and adults. My parents are from the silent generation, the one between the greatest generation and the baby boomers. While they didn't set me up with a multimillion-dollar business takeover, they did give me a pretty good childhood, working side by side with diverse members of all communities as a lineman and a nurse. And even if they haven't always understood the way others choose to live, they have always been open to try. Being silent does not mean they have nothing to say, but it did mean, for me, the encouragement to live a life authentically and attend to my own concerns. My concerns today arise from my appreciation for the bravery and empathy that I've had, the privilege to know through my work with the members of our local LGBTQ+ community. Every time I hear such vitriolic words about this community, like the one spoken here on Monday, my heart breaks for the youth and who just want to be seen and heard as living, breathing, vital human beings deserving of love and respect. When I volunteered at Field Gay this year, I saw people of all ages beaming with the joy of being seen and heard. I saw heteronormative allies like myself beaming with pride for their friends and loved ones. It was no surprise to me at all that I witnessed no hatred, no abuse, and no coercion, but I witnessed kindness, gentleness, patience, self-control, peace, love, and goodness, as it has been said, "You will know them by these fruits of the Spirit." We are living in a time when supportive communities are in grave danger. When community dies, democracy dies. There are ravenous wolves in sheep's clothing who pretend to worship one master while truly serving another. They worship money and power, and they want all of it for themselves. Again, you will know them by their fruits. Their fruits are displayed by angrily raving about protecting our children from predators while gleefully celebrating profits from their Metta stock and TikTok stock. To this wonderful community behind me, I want to say I see you, I hear you, and you are loved. To everyone else who does not understand or who refuses to, I want to share what my mother said to me when I was a little butt-headed eight-year-old. When I was mad at her one day, I really leaned into the mean, and I told her, "I don't like you, and I don't love you." Then she just sighed, and she said, "I'm very sorry to hear you feel that way, and I sure hope you change your mind." So I want you all to know, and she said, "I want you to know that I'll always love you very much." Changing my mind was a simple choice after that, and I'm here to try to keep us moving forward and changing our minds towards a more loving community in Shreveport.
The next card I have is Paige Hoffpower.
Clerk, could you please restart the time? I'll note eight minutes and eleven seconds.
Ms. Hoffpower, if you would, welcome. Please state your name and address for the record.
Paige Hoffpower, 1064 Gabriel Stern.
Thank you.
I'm going to request an additional three minutes after the first...
Point of order, we will provide an additional three minutes based upon acclamation once we deem that...
Thank you. I was just giving a heads up.
Thank you.
Thank you for your point. You may begin.
My heart is horrified to think the removal of the Job Corps Center in one of our most vulnerable areas will go forth without even a discussion. No, all that was said Monday is, "This is bad, really, really bad. Kids are being put out, and there is nowhere for them to go." I saw a little clip of one of the students. Fear was in her eyes when she reported she was 38% completed with one of her trainings, and now she and others are just being put out on the streets with no hope of completion or a brighter day.
Point of order, Ms. Hoffpower, we do request that all comments be germane to the agenda items on hand.
This encompasses that.
Job Corps?
Yes, this is about the children. This encompasses that, if you just let me have my time.
Okay, no problem.
Thank you. This should not be the case. Have you studied what it would take to keep the doors open and revamp the system? Why should the federal government be paying for our children to get educated?
Ms. Hoffpower, once again, I will have to remind you that your comments would have to be germane to our agenda items. Job Corps and the federal government, as it relates to our response to that issue, is not germane to our agenda item. If you'd like to address, I'm speaking. If you'd like to address item 11.11, you're more than welcome to do so. If not, then...
Is this public comments?
It is, but it will have to be germane to our agenda item.
This is responding to your work session on Monday. I'm speaking about the pickleball, that item 11.11, as well as this.
You're more than welcome to speak, but Job Corps and all that is not germane to anything that's on our agenda. Thank you. You may continue.
Okay. Could there be alliances made and networking done to reprogram this vital system in our city? But instead, you spent 45 minutes considering a $10 million pickleball complex to be built with taxpayer money, which you will then charge taxpayers to use. This doesn't seem right to me either, and it's in my neighborhood, and it would be a very nice addition. What is more valuable to their city? Broken children you'll have to pay for because you robbed them of their purpose because they are not being invested in or taught to the degree that they can take care of themselves? Or a new pickleball complex that ultimately will grow old because the newness of it will just deteriorate with time, and the facility will lose its gleam over the course of 10-year period, like all our facilities the mayor is trying to revitalize today? No, today's important decision is here. Will we take care of our children, or will we deny the relevancy to a dying, decaying city that needs them to thrive? The answer is clear. Our hearts are with the children, the children who need your support right now at the Job Corps Center, the children who need to be safe in our neighborhood parks and public schools, with authorities who believe in the sanctity of marriage, the preciousness of family, and their firm obligation as governing officials to protect these virtues in our city with all their might and strength. I'd like to ask for more time at this point.
Move to extend for three minutes. I would like to remind you, Ms. Hoffpower, that this six minutes does include your allocated 15 minutes for this issue. Thank you. You may continue.
I'm not sure what that just meant.
Does that pass by acclamation? Is there anyone in opposition? Okay. All right, please reset the time at three minutes.
Three minutes and 56 seconds, please. She did have 56 seconds left.
Thank you.
Thank you. Gone are the days when we can just bluff our way through a job. If you are not called here by God to rule and reign in dignity for the children, you are called to protect with righteous regulations and decrees, then you should not be in office here. We ask that you leave and vacate your position if you are one of these found lacking today. I'm not sure it would be a bad thing, just an honest thing. Sometimes we acquire wealth or status to our own demise. To save yourself today, so save yourself today, leave office if you are not here for the moral and judicial reason God would have you here. Repent and turn back. God will heal you and help you recover with newfound direction and a hope for tomorrow's real, full, real, for tomorrow that's real, full of purpose and impact, not niceties and affliction because you're really not qualified for or registering the importance of what this government seat of authority demands. God will replace you with the caring, the loving, the strength he has in individuals he has gifted them with to do the job at hand. For those of you who are moral, thank you. I believe your voting will show that today. Those of you who are immoral, relieve your position so a man or woman appointed to the task by God can come in and make virtuous decisions. I say these words with great honor and respect for all of you sitting here today. We are all a work in progress, and God has not finished with any of us yet. Praise God. I mean all of this with his heart and love for each of you, each and every one of you, sincerely and with God's encouragement to you today. But you are making decisions that affect generations today. The 300 kids being exported today out of the safety of the Job Corps Center, the hundreds of thousands of kids who need restoration of the family, a husband and wife as protection and role modeling, and money that if it's available for pickleball complex at this time, it is certainly available for more righteous matters that are needed first. Perhaps later on, the pickleball complex. I am for entertaining ways to stay physically fit, but let's invest in our children today. Vote no to pickleball complex, vote no to LGBTQ Pride Month, and vote yes to using work meetings to find viable solutions to meet the current crisis and needs of our city's vital functioning. Thank you for hearing me out today. Respectfully yours, Paige Hoffpower.
Thank you. I would like to remind those who are standing in the back, there are some seats up front... I would like to remind those who are standing in the back, there are some seats up front if you would like to have a seat. There are some seats available. Okay, and as an additional reminder, Mr. Parliamentarian, I have at least 10 cards that are left, and I think we have eight minutes.
Yes.
Twelve.
I believe that we have eight cards that are in affirmative for that. I do believe one of the leaders, Ms., you want to speak? Okay. Sam Ortiz is going to speak on behalf of, since it was referenced Monday, Field Gay. She is here to speak. Sam Ortiz is here to speak.
Okay. Sam Ortiz. Hi, Sam, if you would, please state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Sam Ortiz, 219 Andrea Street, 71106.
Thank you. You have the remaining time of eight minutes and 10 seconds. And just to remind you that there are several cards that are still.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Thank you. You may begin.
I would like to begin by thanking the esteemed commissioners for their motion to proclaim June as Pride Month. I stand here as someone born here and someone who has called this parish home for my entire life. I'm someone who has spent over a decade of that time actively building up my parish. In addition to that, I also serve my community as a licensed clinical social worker at a local nonprofit agency. I, along with three others, created Shreve Pride to provide a safe, accepting, including, and positive environment for our community. Through our efforts, we have been able to connect thousands of people to necessary supports, community resources, medical and mental health resources, and human connection. Pride is nothing more than the fight for our ability to exist and to exist in peace. The members of our community make up vital pieces of every fabric of this region, from the people who serve us in our restaurants to the people who serve us in public office. The diversity of Caddo's people is what makes us so rich, and the LGBTQIA+ community is part of that diversity. This month, like every month, we strive to uplift, we strive to heal, we strive to connect, and we strive to celebrate authenticity within ourselves. We hope that Caddo Parish will be a part of that celebration, but make no mistake, Pride Month is not going anywhere, and neither am I.
Thank you. The next card I have is Adrienne Critcher. Hi, Adrienne, if you would, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Adrienne Critcher, 817 Ontario Street, Shreveport.
Thank you.
I'm a founding member of PACE, a local LGBT advocacy organization, and I'm here today to thank the Commission for its past proclamations recognizing June as Pride Month and to support the passage of the resolution before you today, recognizing June 2025 as Pride Month. At your work session on Monday, you heard from a group who used their own personal religious beliefs to implore you to vote against the Pride Resolution this year. Their speaker used vitriolic language to demonize LGBT people and their families and even ask our city to deny LGBT organizations the right to hold public events. If ever the Commission needed a reason to support the LGBT community, to make a public statement against the demonization of and discrimination against LGBT people and their families, that group provided it. Because of groups like the one you heard from on Monday, for years, being gay, lesbian, bisexual, or transgender, or having an LGBT family member, was something people were afraid to talk about. This meant the only voices that people heard were the ones completely distorting and misrepresenting the lives of LGBT people. But as more and more LGBT people and their families have decided to come out and lead open, honest lives, Americans are seeing for themselves that the hateful lies that they've been told about LGBT people simply are not true, that true family values mean that all family members are loved, valued, and nurtured for who they are. These are families like mine that remain beautifully whole. I don't think your sexual orientation or your gender identity is something to be proud of or ashamed of. Most of us, regardless of our sexual orientation or gender identity, strive to lead productive, meaningful lives, and in doing so, want and deserve the encouragement and support of our families, churches, and government. Yet it's too often these very institutions that reject, demonize, and every year pass laws denying basic rights to LGBT people. Yet LGBT people still lead lives of contribution, courage, and commitment while facing senseless discrimination. Now that's something to be proud of. So I'd encourage you once again this year to proclaim June as Pride Month, to recognize our wonderful LGBT community here that continues to carry on despite the attacks on it by people like the ones you heard from on Monday. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to ask everyone to please hold your applause so that we can get through these cards as quickly as possible. Thank you so much for your cooperation. Father Garrett Voit.
Thank you, Garrett Voit, 875 Cotton Street, 71101. I just stand to say that LGBT people are valued and honored members of our community at Holy Cross. Their charity, goodness, and lives bear witness to their love, their faithfulness, and their thoughtfulness, despite a lifetime of hostility, declare an essential contribution to the fabric of our community. Their authenticity and sincerity to the vocation of God on their lives is such that it cannot be ignored, try as some might. And so, to the extent that this body considers the sincerely held religious beliefs of members of our community, I would just say that there are indeed many Christians in this parish who find the denigration of LGBT people on the grounds of our shared belief in Christ to be antithetical to the teachings of the gospel and the example of Christ. Furthermore, there are many of us, myself included, who would commend the passage of this resolution honoring the contribution of LGBT members of our community as a suitable gesture, noting that the values of inclusion, cooperation, mutual affection, and care for those often derided and cast aside are values that are at the core of Pride Month and one would hope at the core of our community as well. Thank you.
Thank you. The next card we have is Kanye Michelle.
I would like to pause the clock and please return it to two minutes and 20 seconds. Thank you.
Kanye Michelle, address I'm giving today is 520 Olive Street, 71104.
Thank you.
I'm here today as an ally in support of the Pride Month Resolution. As a Christian woman and as a person who values all members of my community, when there are people who show up to meetings in the interest of making their neighbors feel less safe, less visible, and less valued by the community where we all live our lives together with the common goal of a thriving community, I think it's very important to show up and state that regardless of a resolution, to so many of us in Shreveport, members of the LGBTQ plus community are seen, valued, and worthy of safety. Commissioners, I believe that a decision to vote against this resolution, which seeks nothing more than to celebrate queer pride, sends a message that you, in your position as Commissioner, do not personally have interest in seeing, valuing, or caring about LGBTQ members of your constituency. The choice in this vote doesn't seem to me to be whether or not you, as an elected official, charged with caring for the outcomes of all members of this parish, see yourself as an ally, or even show what side you fall on in what you call a controversial issue. But whether or not you're willing to value all members of your constituency, regardless of their lifestyle, I hope you all choose to vote today for the resolution in support of Pride Month to show us all that you value all members of your community. Thank you.
Thank you. Lindsay Adams. Okay, you're waving. Xavier Haywood.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Lindsay Adams, 2424 Broadway Drive, Bossier City.
Thank you.
So we've spoken about several things here, so I'm going to kind of skip through my stuff in agreeance with previous language that has been used about the community and reasons to possibly not do this. So as Pride is nationally a recognized month, we are asking for local recognition as well, which symbolizes support and inclusion for the LGBTQ plus community and extends to other marginalized groups as well. This acknowledgement costs nothing but means everything to those who have historically been excluded and erased. One individual proposed to replace Pride Month with Family Month to better honor their and others' faith in God. I believe this is not an either-or situation. Pride Month and Family Month can coexist, reflecting the diverse tapestry of our local community. After all, LGBTQ plus individuals are part of families too, parents, siblings, childrens, friends, and fellow Christians. As elected officials, you represent all residents.
Thank you. Your time has expired.
Thank you.
At this time, I would like to thank everyone for their comments on today. Of course, this is the People's Chamber, and I have about eight cards that are still left. But here's what I would like to do at this time. I would like to ask if there's anyone here who would like to stand in opposition of Resolution 1111, please stand at this time.
And for a point of order, Madam President, I did want to recognize for the public in today's session, it was 1111 Monday, but for today, it is going to be item 8.9 today.
Okay. Thank you. That's the item number, but the resolution number is?
Correct. I misspoke earlier with 11.11. I wanted to clarify that for the record.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam.
Thank you to the two that stood up in opposition of it. Now, at this time, I would like for those who are in favor of this Resolution 8.9 to please stand. You all may be seated. And the additional cards that are left, our clerk would also like to extend an additional opportunity for you. If you would like to send emails, you may email your responses as well, and they will be read into the record. Thank you. Next item, please.
That brings us to visitors, where we do not have any scheduled visitors today, so we move forward to adopting regular session minutes, where you do have the minutes from your previous regular session attached.
It's been moved by Commissioner John Paul Young and second by Commissioner Ron Carthron. Would you like to speak on your motion, Commissioner John Paul Young? Okay. Commissioner Carthron? All right, please vote.
And that motion carries with 12 in support and none in opposition, and brings us to special resolutions, where we do have quite a few special resolutions today, and I will defer to the President. Would you like me to just start at the beginning and go one by one, or would you like me to do a group of them, or how would you like to tackle this?
What we would like to do, we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner John E. Atkins and second by Parliamentarian Victor L. Tins, and I do believe that we'll be entertaining and englobo here of several of these special resolutions. And if there are any commissioners who would like to single out any of them and have any comments, you will have the opportunity, I'm sure, at that time, as well as those who we are presenting to on today. Okay? Commissioner Atkins.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and yes, I'm open to input from the horseshoe. I'd like to englobo and adopt item 8.1, 8.2, 8.3, 8.4, 8.5, 8.6, 8.7, 8.8, 8.10, 8.11, 8.13, 8.14, 8.15, 8.16, 8.18. Running out of breath, Madam Chair. 8.19 and 8.20.
And as well as the additional one under new business?
Yes. That new business is actually in section 20.1.
Okay. All right.
Do we have a, I guess we have a second on that?
Yes, you do. You have a second is already here. Any discussion on any of these? Okay. Now, what we will do is vote on them, and then we'll do the presentation of the ones that are here.
And then, Madam Chair, do we then come back to the ones that are pulled out? Okay.
Yes. Commissioner Stefan Jones.
Thank you, Madam President. If Commissioner Atkins would be open, I don't see why we can't add 8.17. Did I miss that?
Correct.
8.17.
And also 8.12.
I wanted to pull that out because isn't that individual here, 8.17, Madam Chair?
Yeah, I think we can still adopt them together and do it as a presentation.
That's fine. If you'd like to include 8.17, that's fine. And what was the other one?
8.12.
I'm certainly open to that. I didn't know how Commissioner Emerson wanted to handle that, so.
Yeah. I was just speaking on adopting them together and.
That'll be fine. If that works for you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Atkins. Accept step-friendly amendment? And everyone is amenable to that? All right, let's vote.
Commissioner Blake, I'm sorry, I didn't register yours. Thank you very much. And that motion carries with 12 in support and none in opposition, and at this point, would you like me to move towards the presentation?
Yes. We're going to start with the presentations, and then we'll come back to those other items.
Okay. So I know that we have a number of people here today to present. I'm not sure in what order y'all would like to go, but I know that we do have a number of representatives here for 8.12, which is a special resolution recognizing the 250th anniversary of the United States Army. If you'd like to start there, that could be appropriate?
Yes.
Acclamation.
That passes by acclamation. All right.
Okay.
Start. At this time, if you would, please stand. And this is the special resolution recognizing the 250th anniversary of the United States Army on June 14th. Vice President Emerson.
Mr. Clerk, if you would, please read the resolution.
I will begin reading it in just a moment.
Come forward to the podium, please.
It reads, a special, a special resolution honoring the 250th anniversary of the United States Army and commending the service to the nation and the citizens of Caddo Parish. Whereas on June 14th, 1775, the Second Continental Congress established the Continental Army, marking the birth of the United States Army and laying the foundation for the nation's military defense. And whereas for 250 years, the United States Army has steadfastly defended the Constitution, protected the nation's freedoms, and served with honor and distinction in conflicts and missions both domestically and internationally. And whereas the Army's enduring values, loyalty, duty, respect, selfless service, honor, integrity, and personal courage have guided generations of soldiers and their commitment to the nation. And whereas Caddo Parish is home to numerous active-duty soldiers, Army veterans, and their families, whose sacrifices and contributions have enriched our community and upheld the Army's legacy. Whereas the 250th anniversary of the United States Army provides an opportunity to reflect upon the honor, the Army's significant role in shaping the nation's history and securing its future. Whereas Caddo Parish not only enjoys the freedoms of a nation protected by this institution, but it is also proud to call itself home to many active, reservist, and veteran soldiers of the United States Army, including Commissioners Ken Emerson, Senior, Commissioner Ronald Cothran, Commissioner Greg Young, and Commissioner Victor Thomas. Now therefore be it resolved by the Caddo Parish Commission and due legal and regular session convened, that it does hereby recognize and commemorate the 250th anniversary. session convened, that it does hereby recognize and commemorate the 250th anniversary of the United States Army on June 14th, 2025, and extends its deepest gratitude to all soldiers past and present for their unwavering service and dedication. Be it further resolved that this resolution will be made a part of the permanent records of Caddo Parish and be transmitted to the United States Army's 355th Medical Company, the South Shreveport Recruiting Station, the local U.S. Army Reserve, and other local military organizations to express the Commission's appreciation and support. And that is signed by all 12 members of the Caddo Parish Commission.
You may be seated. I would be remiss if I would not mention the names of the Caddo Parish Commission employees that are Army veterans. We have John Butler, Solid Ways Compact Operator; Jeffrey Crane, Jr., Fleet Services Technician II; John Dixon II, Solid Ways Compact Operator; Paul Fox, Public Works Equipment Operator; David Letzinger, Facilities and Maintenance Locksmith; Hughie Scott, Solid Ways Compact Operator; Elsie Shaw, Solid Ways Compact Operator; Charles Stahlnecker, Fleet Signed Shop Worker; Robert Womack, Solid Ways Special Equipment Operator; U.S. Army Reserve Members; Jamarica Mack, Animal Services Officer I; United States Army National Guard; John Paul Hobbs, Solid Ways Compact Operator; Derek Thomas, Juvenile Probation Officer II; Larry Townard II, Juvenile Probation Drug Court Coordinator; and Gary Williams, Solid Ways Compact Operator. Also with me today, ladies and gentlemen, I have some distinguished members from our Army Recruiting Station in Shreveport, as well as the Louisiana Army National Guard, as well as 355th Medical Staff to receive this proclamation, so they can post it within their respective military establishments. To give you a few stats about how important the United States Army is to America, we know that on June 14th, 1775, General George Washington established the Continental Army, which defeated the British, which led us to where we are today in a democratic society with the primary objective of defending the Constitution of the United States of America. Not a king, not a monarchy, not an individual, but the Constitution of the United States of America. So we want us all to remember that. Things that the Army has given America. Engineering. Army Engineers mapped, surveyed routes for railroads, roads, waterways. They also beat lighthouses and canals, improved harbors, and developed systems for flood control such as levees and floodwalls. The Army Corps of Engineers still does those responsibilities to this day. Under medicine, Jonathan Letterman, Medical Director of the Army of the Potomac during the Civil War, developed the first ambulance evacuation system, as well as the triage system. Army Doctors Walter Reed, William C. Corgus, Joseph Siler confirmed that mosquitoes transmitted diseases such as yellow fever, malaria, dengue fever. The use of helicopters to transport patients from the battlefield was first adopted in the Army in World War II. It expanded exponentially in the Korean War and was perfected in the Vietnam War. Many of the first civilian EMTs, medical medical technicians in the 60s and 70s were former Army Combat Medics who had served in Vietnam. Weather. The Army Signal Corps established the first weather service in 1861. It was later pioneered, it later pioneered the use of radar systems for meteorological applications, including storm detecting, determining high-altitude weather conditions, even cloud seeding to bring about rain. Space exploration. The United States' first satellite in space, the Explorer 1, was put in orbit in 1958 using a modified Army-developed Jupiter-C rocket. The first two Americans in space, Alan Shepard and Virgil Gus Grissom, were launched into their suborbital flights aboard the Army-developed Redstone rockets. Inventions. The Jeep, today's SUVs that we enjoy, owe their popularity to the light reconnaissance vehicle requested by the Army in 1940. Ray-Ban, the first pair of Ray-Ban sunglasses, the aviator model, was created on the order of the Army Corps to protect pilots' eyes from sun in high altitude. Bug spray. The Army developed DEET, the active ingredient in many insect repellents to protect soldiers from mosquitoes and jungle warfare during World War II. The EpiPen, a device designated to protect soldiers from chemical exposure, found application as an auto-injecting syringe, people suffering from severe allergic reactions. The electric razor. Retired Lieutenant Colonel Jacob Schick invented the first easily manufactured electric razor and patented in 1928. And many of my veterans know what the three S's mean, so I'll leave that up to them to describe that.
Watch out, I got to this.
Pringles. The Army Quartermaster Corps collaborated with the Department of Agriculture to develop dehydrated potato flakes, including the creation of the popular chip, Pringles. The P-38, which was dear to my heart, when you can open those cans of sea rations. And we love the pound cakes and the beef engraving. So at this time, I just want to share those facts with you, and I would be remiss, I want to lay this in. Tomorrow, June 6th, will be the 81st anniversary of D-Day. We mustn't ever forget that. Germany lost 30,000 killed in action, 80,000 wounded, 210,000 missing. The United States lost 29,000 killed in action, 106,000 wounded or missing in action. Britain, 11,000 killed in action, 13,000 wounded or missing. Canada, I'm sorry, 54,000 wounded or missing. Canada, 5,000 killed in action, 13,000 wounded or missing. France, 12,000 civilians killed and missing. So we want to never forget those sacrifices that was made on behalf of this nation, as well as helping bring about democracy and peace throughout the world. So at this time, I would like to ask our guests if they would introduce themselves and have a few words, starting with.
Madam President, distinguished members of the board here and as well as the local community. I'm Sergeant First Class Bettencourt. I am a local Army recruiter. I am a medic by trade, so a lot of the medicine advancements he was talking about earlier, yep, that came from us. I'm a proud paratrooper from the 82nd Airborne before I became a detailed recruiter, and I will hopefully go back to that. I will tell you that 250 years does mean a lot. A lot of things have happened in this very young nation within 250 years, and the men and women who wore this uniform before me and will continue to wear this uniform after me, we owe them a great thanks for the things that they allow us to do, to sit here today, to discuss things as human beings, to be able to dispute, to be able to agree, to be able to laugh, to be able to cry together. A lot of that comes from this uniform. So I thank you all for this amazing proclamation. This is very valuable, and this is very dear to us all. We continue to serve you. We continue to protect you. We are part of this community, whether we are abroad or we are here. We are always here for you, and we thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, good afternoon. I am First Lieutenant Benjamin Baratron. I'm here with the Second Infantry Cav, Army National Guard, corner stoner, and if you're not familiar with it, it's got the tank out front. Born and raised here, I got in late. I enlisted when I was 29. I remember the guard rolling through whenever the levees broke over in Bossier, and they were pulling my parents out of the water, out of there, and had to go pick them up off a sligo road at 2:00 in the morning. I say all that to say, it's a community here, especially with the guard, and of course, our brothers here with the reserves and the active component as well. We love you guys. We care about you guys. Believe it or not, we do look forward to hurricane season sometimes because we actually get to put in some work for y'all. So thank you for having us. Thank you for the recognition. Look forward to seeing y'all on the streets. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Captain Meyer. I'm with the 355 Medical Company, area support.
Ooh.
Right? Alumni here. We're actually out of Bossier City, but we do appreciate the recognition we get from Shreveport, and we look forward to having more of a presence in the local community. We did partake of during the parade last year, which was great, and we want to keep that up, and we want to be in more active presence in the community here. My time here is running short. I'm actually PCSing within a month, but I am going to ensure that the 355 MCAS continues coming out to these events and making their presence known. That's all I have.
Thank you.
With my colleagues, veterans on the Commission, please stand. They're all U.S. Army vets.
Thank you. And before you leave, the Chair would like to recognize Parliamentarian Victor Thomas.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to say to the public, those who aren't, who are here and those who are listening, it's a very emotional day for me, but recognizing the 250th anniversary of the Army, I just want to say that when I was 17 years old, I joined the Army. And I'll never forget that because while I was terrified, I was extremely honored to be able to serve my country. I remember my mother made jokes to everybody, "Oh, I can't wait for them to get ready to leave, gonna get out of my house." The day that she took me to the airport, it was my first time flying, and we both just cried like a baby because, you know, she was so concerned. But I just want to say that joining the Army was the best decision that I made in my life. I want to say to anybody out there who was lost and don't know what they're going to do, you don't have to have just graduated from high school. If you are looking for a direction, if you're looking for discipline, if you are looking for a way forward, United States Army and all of our armed services provides that for you. So please consider that and consider service to your country. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Parliamentarian Thomas, and thank you for your service. Commissioner Ron Cartheron.
Thank you, Madam President. As a retired Sergeant Major in the United States Army, it gives me great pride to see that it continues to stand. You know, I remember some years ago, as a matter of fact, it's been almost 40-some, almost 50 years ago, to be exact, I remember those old drill sergeants and sergeants telling me, "You're soft. You're very soft." Talking to the entire platoon, but the one thing I've seen, that one thing about the United States Army, and I would say all branches of service, is it don't change. The thing is, the day that you walk in there, the integrity, and one thing I remember from the Sergeant Major, the United States Army, telling me, he said, "Integrity is the only thing no one can take from you. You have to give it away." So I thank you all for everything that you do, those that are under the sound of my voice, and those that I will meet in the future as well. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you, Commissioner Cartheron, and thank you for your service. Vice President Ken Everson Senior.
I graduated high school May 25th, 1965. May 29th, 1965, I was at Fort Polk getting screamed at.
That's right.
But it was the best decision that I made. Best decision. And at the age of 20, I was a Sergeant E5 in charge of 23 men.
That's right.
And millions of dollars' worth of equipment. It was a great confidence builder. Once I got out, it made me realize my worth and what I was capable of doing, and that's why I've acquiesced that in the public service. And I'm into my 27th year as a Commissioner and a total of 52 years working in the community with the Army Foundation. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Everson. We appreciate your service and your passion. Commissioner Grace Ann Blake.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to say to each one of y'all here representing the Army, I want to say thank you as a citizen for serving, for being the one percenters willing to give all, for us to have the opportunity to come and talk, make decisions, to argue at times, but at other times to come together, to agree. And I just want to say thank you as a mother of a son who is in the Army National Guard. I've never been more proud than when he signed up and scared, knowing that he was now a one percenter. So just thank you so much, and thank you for representing the men and the women who are so proudly serving. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner Grace Ann Blake. Seeing no other commissioners on the board.
Madam President, I'd just like to recognize other members of our Veterans Committees, not only Veterans Affairs Committee, Commission, not only veterans, but Ms. Grace Ann Blake, and I think Mr. John Atkins are members of our Caddo Parish Commission Veterans Affairs Committee. So it's important that civilians, as well as veterans, become a part of this because we all served this nation at some point in time in some way, form, or fashion. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Everson.
Grace Ann's a book private.
Yes, what your rank was.
All right. Now, Mr. Clerk, if we could, at this time.
Thank you. I'll move forward.
I think you have a list.
I do. The next special resolution we have to present today is to Chef Nima DeGracia. She. And I will begin, it's a special resolution honoring Chef.
If you would, please stand.
Honoring Chef Nima DeGracia, and it reads, whereas the Caddo Parish Commission proudly recognizes individuals in our community who exemplify excellence, creativity, and perseverance in their craft, and serve as a source of inspiration for others. And whereas Chef Nima Tila DeGracia, a culinary artist, entrepreneur, fashion designer, and beloved figure in Northwest Louisiana, recently showcased her talent on the national stage by competing on the Food Network's acclaimed cooking competition show, Beat Bobby Flay, and emerged victorious. Whereas her win on Beat Bobby Flay is not only a personal triumph, but also a shining moment of pride for the entire Caddo Parish community, where Chef Nima is widely known for her passion for food, her bold flavors, her inimitable personality, her charm, and unwavering commitment to authenticity. And whereas Chef Nima has long been an advocate for cultural culinary heritage, bringing the traditions of her mother's kitchen in Sierra Leone into new contexts, combining Creole with Creole and infusing her dishes with contemporary flourishes, soulful tradition, and setting the table for storytelling, and bringing people around the table to honor the richness of together, of being together and enjoying flavor. Whereas through her business ventures, work in the fashion industry, community events, and media appearances, Chef Nima DeGracia has served as a role model for women, young people, and all those pursuing their dreams with faith, grit, and purpose. And whereas her victory on national television is a testament to the world-class talent nurtured right here in Caddo Parish, and underscores the power of passion, preparation, and perseverance. Now therefore be it resolved by the Caddo Parish Commission that it does hereby extend its sincere congratulations and heartfelt admiration to Chef Nima DeGracia for her outstanding accomplishments and for bringing honor and distinction to herself, her craft, and the people of Caddo Parish, and does hereby declare Saturday, June 7th, 2025, as Chef Nima DeGracia Day in Caddo Parish, Louisiana. Urging all citizens to join with the Caddo Parish Commission to celebrate Chef Nima for her contributions to the cultural and culinary landscape of our region, and wish her continued success in all of her future endeavors. Signed by all members of the Caddo Parish Commission.
Thank you, everyone. You may be seated. Chef Nima, you have the floor.
Oh, thank you. Thank you so much, the Parish of Caddo, State of Louisiana, my lovely commissioners. Thank you very much, Madam President. Thank you for having me. Thank you to my community. And thank you to my family, but most importantly, to pride. This is for y'all. Because all of my friends I'm celebrating today. First of all, I want to thank my executive director behind me, Mr. Wendell Riley, for giving me the opportunity, for believing in me, to bring me along to Abbey Singers Bistro, a place that is very dear to my heart, a place that I love dearly. I've met many friends that have taken to Sierra Leone from that balcony. So having my touch, having my work, being showcased there gives me so much joy because I know that place is going to be a destination. I am deeply honored and humbled to receive. I am deeply honored and humbled to receive the resolution from the Caddo Parish Commission in recognition of my victory beating and flaying Bobby Flay. This moment is just not for me. It is for my community. It is for my family in Sierra Leone. It is for my friends. It is for women and men around the world that do not have hope. Like when I left Sierra Leone, I didn't know what I was gonna do in America. I worked for J.P. Morgan Chase Bank, but I always know that I want to feed people. I want to take care of people's temple and take care of the body and give them good food. And today, I did that because Shreveport supported me. The surrounding areas believed in me. Like I said at the watch party, if you did not believe in me, I would have been as big as this chamber because I'll eat all my food by myself. So thank you. Thank you for coming to the food truck. Thank you for supporting my dream. This is not, again, not just because of me, but for our entire community. As I approach and open my phone, bear with me. It's a celebration of culture, community, and the power of dreams realized through hard work. I have put in the work, and girl, let me tap you on your back. You've done well for yourself. Thank you. To be acknowledged by the very city that embraced me and allowed me to grow to something, I'll carry this pride and gratitude for the rest of my life. Thank you for believing in me. Thank you for cheering me on. Thank you for giving me the space to represent Shreveport and Sierra Leone on a national stage. The resolution, this resolution is unjust for me. It belongs to every young dreamer, every immigrant, every chef, and every supporter who has worked beside me on this journey. Thank you for making this day unforgettable. Thank you for believing in me one more time. Thank you to my community. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate you guys. And there's more to come for Shreveport Bojour. If you can, go ahead and watch the show so that Food Network knows that we're on our game, so they can book other chefs to come up there and do many things. But there are many shows coming from the Food Network for us in Shreveport, so we gotta support our businesses here, small businesses, especially RFC. What they're doing for our community is bigger than all of us that works there. Taking care of kids, giving them hope, giving them the understanding to have a home. That's what we do there. We just don't do films. We just don't have a cinema or serve food. We're truly committed to what we do in this community. So support us. Don't just share when a restaurant closed down. Support us while we're still open. I love you guys, and thank you so much.
Chef Nima.
Chef Nima, if you would, please come back to the podium. No, it's your day, lady. We have a few commissioners who want to extend some sentiments to you. We are so grateful to be able to honor you on today. We're so proud of your accomplishments. And we want to say congratulations to you. The first one that we have, who would like to speak to you is Parliamentarian Thomas.
Come on back up here and get this love today, man. To my mighty lioness, my Sierra Leonean sister from across the water, but from the same motherland.
Yes.
Bobby Flay beaten. Nima, we are so proud of you. We've known each other for years. I love you truly and dearly. Not only have you provided us with great cuisine, I believe. We had a committee meeting today, and of course, we had Abbey Singers, and so we were blessed with food from your culture. It was very delicious. I think we can all say that with acclamation. Am I correct?
Amen.
But I just want to say congratulations. No one is more deserving of this recognition from the city, from the parish. I also saw that the state is recognizing you as well. We are so proud of the work that you have done. You have uniquely and creatively come into our community and made sure that we are aware of all that your culture has to offer, and we are so very proud of you for that. It's an honor to be able to do this. It's an honor to be able to stand here and proclaim your victory and how much our community loves you, and we know how much you love our community. One of the things that I love about you is you don't just take the recognition by yourself. You make sure to put others on as well. You make sure that others know about the work that they're doing. So thank you so much for that. I know that this isn't the last time that you'll be up here because you'll continue to do great things to represent this parish. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Parliamentarian Thomas. Commissioner Roy Barrell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to congratulate Chef de Grazia. I've eaten plenty of your food. And I see why you're so slim because you deposited it all. So again, we want to congratulate you. You've really represented our area well, as well as your home country.
Thank you.
So again, congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Barrell. Commissioner Grace Ann Blake.
Thank you, Madam President. Nima, there's so much that I could say about how proud I am of you. But I would like people to know how real you are. I don't know when I first met you, but I do remember the first time I tasted your gumbo. I was like, "What? Where are you from?" But through your gumbo, I tasted your heart. And as a business owner and a woman, you and I connected. And you were one of the first persons that I shared with you that I wanted to do something civically for this community. And while we're at a time, people arguing issues, you and I have always just sat and we discussed the wonderful, beautiful things about this community and how we can help others. And how having a vision of giving back is the most important thing that we can do. And I knew when I first met you that you were gonna go far. Your personality is so big. But the reason why I knew you would do great things is because you always bring people in, and then you lift them up. And so you understand how to promote what you love most while helping others. And so through this process, I've seen you continually support our community for Shreveport, for Bojour, for our parish, for the Arcletex, and for the state, while still loving where you're from. And that's huge. And I appreciate so much that you really, the first person that you recognized were women. And in your industry, I would say, like, I, in the hair industry, we're female strong. But for some reason, the world wants to continually spotlight the men. And I think it's time for women to shine for what they're doing and have always done well. And you talked about the night of the show. And so just continue to shine, continue to do, and to give others from your heart. And I think it's way more than food, but I love that it's food that was the avenue to feed people. No pun intended. So thank you so much for always supporting yourself first, but then bringing others with you.
Thank you.
And thank you for supporting this community. It's so important. Thank you so much, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Blake. Commissioner John Paul Young.
Thank you, Madam President. Nima, I'm so proud of you. We've known each other a long time, so long I can't really remember.
Long time.
Yeah, when? You are a blessing in our community, and I'm so grateful that you live here.
I'm grateful for you.
Congratulations from all of us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Young. Seeing no other commissioners on the board, once again, my friend, congratulations.
Thank you. I appreciate you guys.
All right.
Can I just sit down? I can't just sit down?
Yes, you can. You can sit down now. And you are dismissed if you would like to be, or you could stick around. We still have a lot of business to cover. All right, Mr. Clerk is out of his chair. Our next, he's back? Welcome back, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I had to run a quick errand. And next, next up, I believe we have a presentation for DJ Yoshi.
That's it. If you would, please stand. DJ Yoshi, please come down to the front. Everyone, please stand.
And as he makes his way up, I'll begin to read, "This is a special resolution of recognition for DJ Hot Boy Yoshi, reading, 'Whereas Caddo Parish is home to vibrant culture, rich traditions, and dynamic individuals whose talents elevate our region into national and international stages. And whereas among these creative forces stands DJ Hot Boy Yoshi, a trailblazing DJ, entertainer, and cultural ambassador whose electrifying performances and community engagement have made him a household name and an unwavering symbol of Shreveport-Caddo Parish pride. And whereas DJ Yoshi has been featured, has been a featured talent on numerous Hallmark events, including the Red River Revel, where he championed the intersection of music and community, Rock the Clock, Louisiana's premier New Year's celebration, the prestigious Independence Bowl, highlighting his presence in one of Louisiana's most cherished sports stages, serving as the official DJ for the 2023 Louisiana Prize Fest, celebrating innovation across film, music, food, and fashion, hosting the 49th Annual Bayou Classic Battle of the Bands and the Greek Show, and gracing the stages of the iconic Essence Festival, bringing joy and spirit to the Shreveport Regional Arts Council's Christmas in the Sky. And whereas DJ Yoshi's influence has expanded well beyond local and state lines, having been personally selected by the New Orleans Super Bowl Host Committee to DJ at events for Super Bowl, Super Bowl 19, and, I'm sorry, performing for legendary figures such as Dion Primetime Sanders at his birthday celebration, and sharing stages with icons including Frankie Beverly and Mays, Mary J. Blige, Mike Epps, Big Frida, Ricky Smiley, DJ Jubilee, Jagged Edge, Cedric the Entertainer, 112, and Big X the Plug. And whereas he has also joined major national tours such as Rick Ross's Black Market Tour and Tracy McGrady's OBL Basketball Tour, and continues to light up events from Highland Mardi Gras Parade to nonprofit fundraisers such as Artini for the Bojour Arts Council and the Louisiana Association for the Blinds Eyeball. And whereas beyond his professional accolades, DJ Yoshi embraces the roles that matter most, brother, husband, son, and father, and takes great pride in being a dad to his daughter Kyra, an honor student, literary, literary arts writer, and cheerleader whose achievements echo her father's dedication and drive. Now therefore be it resolved, the Caddo Parish Commission does hereby recognize and honor DJ Hot Boy Yoshi for his outstanding contributions to arts, entertainment, and community advancement. His charisma, commitment, and cultural leadership serve as a beacon of inspiration embodying the spirit, rhythm, and resilience of Shreveport, Caddo Parish, and Northwest Louisiana."
Thank you. You may be seated.
I don't think I had this one on the bucket list, but I take it. I'm so focused on moving forward and continuing to entertain this market on a lot of different levels. To hear it back is what gets you because I, it's like hearing it for the first time. You don't realize everything you have done over time. And let me tell you, like, a lot of things that happened that he read off, those were things that happened with me in the last four years, majority of them. I say this to anybody, and I hate to get to the ending part of it, but I say this to anybody, and I really mean it. Like, if it's something that you want to do, it don't matter like what you was like attached to. It don't matter what you was motivated by. If you don't follow what's in your heart and do what, how you want to do it, you'll never see it. A lot of those things he called off, I kind of figured I wanted to do those things, and I made a checklist and I did them, but that was all during COVID. I was already doing video for eight years. I think a lot of you guys in here know that. I entertained for a long time. I started off like 2002, 2003 with Kool Mar and Jarrow Productions and what. It was just one big family. We still are. And I started then, and I did so much. They kind of sparred me because I wasn't never starstruck after a while. You know, I got to hang out with celebrities after a while. It became the norm. But I got so content with doing that. It was some more things that I wanted to do, and I just found out that I can actually do those things. Shout out to my team that works with me. I know I get all in there all day, every day. But I got a great team. If I tell them that I want to go to the moon, one person is gonna figure out how much rocket fuel we need. The other person is gonna figure out, well, what type of music you think they want to hear on the moon. And I assembled that team together to work around me so it can fit me. There's a lot of people in here. My family's here. It's just, it's just a community that embraced me, and it's a lot of people that I have entertained. If I have entertained you some shape, form, or fashion, show me your hands real quick. That me. So I feel real honored to be here and to get that award. And it's just, it's crazy because I'm still in a state of shock, you know. I'm gonna work on the Grammy. I'm gonna continue to do what I'm doing. I want to say this too. My daughter's here. I don't know if she gonna speak or not. But I want to say this. Don't give up on nothing, no matter the age or the demo. Don't give up. If you after something, go and take it. And I would like to thank the people that allow me to be creative because it's a lot of people don't know how creative I can be, you know. I'm just not a DJ. I like to curate the whole event, you know. I like to make sure the sound is right, make sure the lighting is right, what is the theme, you know. It's more than just playing music. I like to not play people favorite music, but to play people favorite moment, or relive people favorite moment for them, so through the music, and I enjoy that. So I'm not gonna take up too much more time because I know there's a lot of people in here. My new GM is here from Kimmel's Media. Shout out to Paul. He's here.
Ask Paul to stand. Ask everyone who you brought with you to-
So everybody that's, that came here for my ceremony, can you please stand? Got Kool Mar here, Nima's here. My God, Robinson, everybody's here. Wade here from the Film Commission. I got so many friends in Shreveport market industry. I've been around for a while, and I'm just getting started. So keep allowing me to be creative. It's something I'm definitely gonna do for a long time, is be creative because that's something nobody can say you replicated. It comes from you. And we just getting started. We on this long journey, so put your seatbelts on. It's finna get crazy. This gonna be a crazy weekend kicking off this Thursday. With this, of course, we got the International Wine Festival Sunday. That's gonna be amazing. Then after that, I got my fingers crossed for Essence Fest. We gonna try to do that again. So New Orleans kind of favored me a little bit, so we gonna see how that works out. So thank everybody, all the commissioners. I appreciate you guys, and let's run it back again. I'm gonna keep going.
All right, DJ Yoshi. Don't leave, Yoshi. Come back, come back. We know you're excited. It's your day. But we're here to just celebrate your accomplishments. You do so much more for the community. You did not touch on that. But he also makes sure that he provides resources for young people, for all people in our community. So we appreciate the work that you're doing in Caddo Parish beyond your entertainment lifestyle. There are several commissioners who are on the board who wants to congratulate you, and we know that the best is still yet to come. So we're going to allow Parliamentarian Victor Thomas to take the lead on this.
Thank you, Madam President. Yoshi, I ain't gonna call your government name out, but we, that's how you're officially known. We definitely love you here in this community. You have literally recreated and created and recreated some moments for us in this community. Like Madam President said, you provide so much more than just entertainment. The resources that you provide to your community, the community that you're from, the Cooper Road, not only that they impact our entire parish as a whole. I want you to know that. First, let me say New Orleans cannot have you, so I don't care how many jobs they offer you. You're not moving down there. But we definitely want to say thank you so much. A lot of times, our resolutions are criticized, but what I want the public to know is that long when we're all gone, long when we've all ceased to exist, your name will be in the history of Caddo Parish forever. That's what it's about for us. It's making sure that your contributions are valued long before we're here, okay? I want to thank you so much, man. You look at the list of names that you've impacted and touched and performed in front of, and it's such a feat and such an achievement, man. Keep doing the great work that you're doing. We talk all the time about how you want to do more. It's not about these celebrities for you. It's about making an impact for you, and that's what I admire about you. And I thank you so much for your contributions. Thank you.
Thank you, Parliamentarian Thomas. Commissioner Stefan Jones.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Madam President. I reserve the government name as well, but that's, that's how I met you. We were young kids, being mentored by the Masons, and so got to know you then. And I knew then that you had a very outgoing personality, and it's just such a full circle moment to, to share this moment with you today as adults, to see you here being recognized. And it means a lot to me, because my generation is often criticized for what we're not contributing to our community. But this is another example that just because we're not working really loud doesn't mean we're not working. And he's been doing so many things in the background that people don't know about to prepare him for this moment. And so this, it's just great to see where God's getting ready to take you, even where he has you now. But I know that there is a level that eyes have not seen, neither have ears heard, neither has it entered into the hearts of men, what God has in store for you. And so I'm just excited for you to be here today. This is, this is huge for me, man. I'm really proud of you. And you talk about those moments. I was, I was pretty tired and ready to go home, and Christmas in the sky, and Commissioner Thomas says, you know Yoshi's about to get on stage. And it was like a rock star was getting ready to come out. The way everybody gravitated towards the stage to hear this young man do what he does so well, and that's create memories. And that's what's most important. When, you know, when all of the platforms are gone, you still have those memories to rely on. And I'm gonna take this privilege, because I know he's gonna run out the door as soon as you sit down. But the legendary, my band director at Grambling State University, the Dr. Larry J. Penel is in the building.
Hiding behind the collar right there.
So this is a testament of what you all have poured into us and our generation. Dr. Penel is here to support him, because he poured into, to Yoshi, and we've heard that, and we're doing the things that you all have taught us to do. And this is a great example of it, and I want the world to know that Caddo is strong, Caddo is beautiful, and we're here to stay. So congratulations, man, and I can't wait till we see the next thing you're getting ready to do.
Let's do it.
Thank you, Commissioner Jones. Commissioner Gregory Young.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd just like to say briefly, I know that I was growing rather late, that I met this young man, I think, last year at MLK Yeahhood Association event. I didn't know at the time when I met you that some of my favorite people on the Seerode are actually family members. I just realized that today. You all stand up back there in the back. There you go. There go my brother Cece, DeeDee. Those are some wonderful folks. They're some of the best people that live in Northwest Louisiana back there in that corner over there.
Oh, yeah.
It's a family, yes. I'd just like to really congratulate you for being uniquely you. We live in a copycat world.
Amen.
The language that we speak, we, we've learned this language because somebody else spoke this language before we got here. The clothes, the choice of attire that we adorn is clothing that other people were wearing before we got here. Everything that we do, we essentially copy off of someone else. But you found a way to be uniquely you, and it takes a lot of courage. Courage that's not necessarily visible, because when you decided to trek out on your journey, you, you weren't aware as to whether or not this actually paved the way for your success.
Right.
But your identity and the way you present yourself has become a trademark for your talent and for what you're all about. And I really want to applaud you for that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Young. Again, congratulations.
Thank you.
And we are very proud of all of your accomplishments.
Thank you.
You are more than welcome.
One more thing I would like to say. July 19th would be my Job Fair, Research, Health and Wellness Fair, David Raines Community Center. It would be like no other. You think a DJ putting on a, a public event for the community is going to be really different, but really exciting and real fun. We working on year number four. I plan to do some major things in my community on year number four. So I'm gonna need the help of everybody, everybody up here, all the commissioners, the city councilors, to make this thing grow, and it don't have to just stay in my neighborhood. We can go on tour around the whole Shreveport, because I believe that we can't all run down and change the wave of the city. We gotta do it one neighborhood at a time.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you, DJ Yoshi, for making Caddo Parish, helping us to make Caddo Parish the destination location. All right, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you. I believe our next presentation is a special resolution honoring Mr. Riefus Combs.
Riefus Combs? Is it Riefus?
Yeah, it's Riefus.
It's Riefus? Is he here?
Yeah, he's here.
Okay. All right, at this time, if you would, please stand.
I'll begin to read it into the record as Mr. Combs makes his way up. This is a special resolution honoring Mr. Riefus Combs, and it reads, whereas the Caddo Parish Commission desires to give special recognition to individuals in our communities whose lives reflect a legacy of service, humility, and quiet strength. Whereas Mr. Riefus Combs is one such individual, a man whose steady presence, dedication, and integrity have made a lasting impact on the lives of others, not through accolades or fanfare, but through quiet commitment and consistent action. Whereas Mr. Combs is a veteran of the United States Armed Forces, having honorably served his country and exemplified the values of duty, sacrifice, and patriotism. And whereas following his military service, Mr. Combs went on to a distinguished career with the United States Postal Service, where he worked faithfully for many years before his retirement, and was an active and engaged member of the Postal Workers Union advocating for the rights and well-being of his fellow employees. Whereas Mr. Combs is also an active member of his church, serving as both a deacon and a member of the Board of Trustees for Trinity Baptist Church, where he embodies the principles of faith, service, and community uplift, offering his time and support wherever there is need. And whereas throughout his life, Mr. Combs has consistently made every situation he is a part of better, bringing wisdom, encouragement, and integrity without ever seeking recognition or the spotlight. And though he is often appreciated by those who know him, he, he is not often formally honored. And whereas the Caddo Parish Commission wishes to change that today by acknowledging the profound contributions of Mr. Combs and the example he sets for all through his humility, hard work, and unwavering dedication to others. Now therefore be it resolved by the Caddo Parish Commission that it does hereby recognize and commend Mr. Riefus Combs for his service to his country, his advocacy for workers, his devotion to the faith community, and his invaluable contributions to the greater good of Caddo Parish. And be it for the resolve that a copy of this resolution be shared with Mr. Combs and entered into the official records of the Caddo Parish Commission in grateful recognition of a life spent in quiet and faithful service.
Thank you all. You made it. Congratulations, Mr. Combs.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
And other commissioners. God is a good God.
Amen.
Out of all the death threats that I have received, I'm still alive.
Amen.
I stand on the shoulder of two of the most profound Americans that had an impact on my life. The late President John F. Kennedy and Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. President Kennedy said, ask not what your country can do for you, but what you can do for your country.
All right.
Dr. King spoke the words of the prophet Amos, but let judgment run down its water and righteous as a mighty screen. When I started working at the U.S. Postal Service here in Shreveport in 1977, out of the 117 towns and cities in North Louisiana, the Postal Service employed only one black postmaster, and that was at Grambling. I started writing letters and protests, and they sent a black lady down from Washington, D.C. by the name of Mary Brown. And that's how we got blacks being promoted in management in the U.S. Postal Service. Some years ago, when I came to Shreveport in 1967, I helped integrate the VOTEC School on North Market. The only person that in management, you might call them the staff, were black custodians. I wrote AGW, had an investigation, and they hired to hire three blacks at the VOTEC School. You might remember one, Nathaniel Whitehurst, a barber. I feel that my days is about over now. I do not want a long funeral. I don't want nobody saying, say that he fought in the Vietnam War, never got a soldier killed or hurt walking in his back behind him. I was a point man. Only thing in front of me was a dog. I don't want anybody to say he got blacks hired in top position at the post office at VOTEC School. Put a new roof at his own church, the Trinity Baptist Church, paid more money to put a roof on the church than I did put on my house. Or I want somebody to say in my funeral, that old champ stood up what he thought was right, and he tried to help somebody. May God bless and keep all of you. Here's my prayer. Thank you.
If you will, Mr. Combs, please stay right there. We thank you so much for your service, and thank you for sharing that information with us on today. We appreciate what you have done and contributed to Caddo Parish and beyond. We have Commissioner Gregory Young, who would also like to share some sentiments. Commissioner Young?
Thank you.
You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Eight months removed from being 16 years old, I joined the United States Army. I wish I could say, like, some of my colleagues, that the Army made a man out of them, and how that they became a man while they were in the military. But I wish I would have had that privilege. I didn't have that privilege. I had to become a man very, very young in life because of the circumstances that I grew up in. I had to be very, very serious, or else I would, I was gonna fall through the cracks. You know, I was that little kid in the fifth grade going through the neighborhood and around town looking for a job. And I got a job in the fifth grade working at the local store. I was that little kid behind the counter, and I worked every year of my, of my high school career. I didn't get to enjoy going to senior proms. I had to take life very, very seriously. When I got out of the military, I went to work for the Postal Service, and I still had that same energy. While on probation, I was, I was offered a position to be in management while on probation. But I was a bit too intense for that, because I didn't think they were very serious about their mission. And after I had been there for maybe about eight months, I looked down the aisle, and I saw a gentleman walking down the aisle, and people were applauding him. And I asked someone, what was that all about? And they said, there goes the champ. And that this rather young man then, I think I was like about 21, I think he was probably, not to tell your age, he's probably in his early 30s. The Postal Service not wanting to pay overtime to deliver mail in black neighborhoods, the champ went to the media with it, and they fired him for that. Now, there are a lot of people who do a lot of talking about standing up for what's right, and we've never been more eloquent in talking about standing up for what's right than in this moment we find ourselves now in. But Champ was one of those people who risked his job. Like he said, when he came to work at the Postal Service, there weren't many blacks in the Postal Service in Shreveport, and neither in North Louisiana. I think Carl Stewart, his dad, was, was a letter carrier. And of course, he has, you know, family members that are now judges. Emmanuel, I think two of his children, boy and girl, became judges in this community. That was George Obi, was just a handful. And this man had just gotten out of the military and went to work for the Postal Service in 77. I came in 78. Think about how rare of an opportunity this was to have a good job, and this man risked all of that, not for himself, but to bring fairness and justice to his community. The reason why it's important that I mention this today because I didn't see anybody around in Shreveport when I came back here that had that kind of energy. But Champ was that guy who had that kind of energy, that was willing to risk all to help someone else. And for that, I owe him a great deal in the way that he inspired me. And I want you to know, Champ, that you'll be remembered, because your DNA is out there. You, I have your DNA. And because I have your DNA, there'll be many people within this area that's going to have your DNA. People who are willing to stand in this hour of great trial and tribulation, to stand for what is right, not because it brings them favor, and not because it brings them shine or accolades, but they want to do it because it's right. And for that, I really do appreciate you, Champ. God bless you. And I want, I want everybody to know that this is not all the Champ is. If you walk into his house, it looks like a museum. I want you to know that the Champ is probably the, the second best domino player in the world. Thank you very much. I yield.
All right. Slapping bones. Don't do that. Commissioner Atkins.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I've never had the privilege of meeting Mr. Combs, but I just wanted to compliment you on your speech. You still have it. I see why they called you Champ back, back in the day. You've still got that, that fighting spirit today, and I thought you did a wonderful job of taking us through your experiences. And I wanted to thank you for your service to our community and to the larger community on multiple levels. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Atkins. Commissioner Grace Anne Blake.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you so much, Mr. Combs, for what you've done for this community. You said something that I think most people here will not understand the seriousness or understand what you did for our citizens. And when you talked about the many death threats that you incurred in your time, I have never experienced anything like that, but I grew up hearing stories of that time, because my grandfather was chief of police at the time that you were fighting for rights. And so I grew up hearing the stories of the death threats. My grandfather, until he died, was under threats of death here, for fighting to do what's right. As Commissioner Young stated, you have done what's right because it's right. And there are just really no words for the gratitude that I have. And for what you did for VOTEC, I'm a product of VOTEC, and I'm a barber because of VOTEC. So I just, I just sit here in awe. I don't know you, but I know the stories. And thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Blake. Commissioner Roy Barrell.
I think I would be remiss if I didn't congratulate. I think I would be remiss if I didn't congratulate Champ on all, on all of his accomplishments. A lot of the things that you had to stand for, it, when you was talking about it, it brought me back to my first day on my job here in Shreveport when I came with, with no engineers, with Bell South, black engineers, Bell South. And my boss told me on my first day, we don't want you here. And, and, and as a college student coming out after you have worked through and, and had to do double duty, someone put that in your face, that's pretty tough. But it gave me a tough spine to work toward helping others, more so than myself. I never concentrated on me. And, and to me, your story says the same thing. You had to fight for others, and that's always admirable. So again, congratulations. And I've seen you around. We've met before a number of times.
Right.
But I didn't know you was that tough. I know now. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Barrell. Again, we congratulate you and thank you so much for all of your valuable contributions to Caddo Parish. God bless and keep you is our prayer.
Thank you. By the way, I don't play dominos anymore. The Lord stopped me about three years ago. He got something else for me to do, I guess.
I was gonna explore a lesson off the record. Thank you so much. I think that will conclude all of our special presentations of any of these resolutions. And the next item that we'll take up will be Resolution 8.9.
That is correct. So, we are on 8.9. That is, sorry, I turned the wrong page on my agenda. 8.9 is the special resolution recognizing Pride Month.
Okay. And it's been moved by Parliamentarian Victor Thomas and second by Commissioner Stefan Jones. Parliamentarian Thomas, would you like to speak on your motion?
Um, yes. Thank you, Madam President. Before I begin with a statement that I have prepared, I want to say that oftentimes that if I ever had to prepare a statement, I want to make this clear that I don't speak from a place of hate. Even with my colleagues, I've always expressed opposition or support for anything from a place of love, from understanding, and for us to be able to work together. I want to say publicly to Paige, thank you. This lady has done some things for my mother that I thank her wholeheartedly for. So, I'm gonna make sure I publicly thank you for that, Paige. I rise today in support of a legislation, a resolution, excuse me, that acknowledges Pride Month in Caddo Parish. Not as a political statement, but as a reflection of our shared humanity and the values of dignity, respect, and inclusion that every citizen deserves. Some have referenced scripture in opposition to this recognition, pointing to verses from Leviticus or other parts of the Old Testament. And I want to say clearly, I am no stranger to the Word. I grew up in the church. I'm still an active member of my church and I still walk daily with Christ. And because of that walk, I have spent time wrestling with scripture, not to weaponize it, but to understand it more deeply. The Old Testament gave us many laws. Some of them are very severe. Some are difficult to reconcile with how we live today. According to those same texts, touching the skin of a dead pig is considered unclean. Yet on any Sunday night or Sunday week, celebrate football, we cheer our people as they, as they score touchdowns. Other laws prohibit trimming your beard, wearing mixed fabrics, eating shrimp and pork. Yet many of us, myself included, have enjoyed a good barbecue or lined up for gumbo, not fearing eternal consequence. What this teaches us is not that the law is wrong, but that it is, it was written for a people in a particular time, under a theocracy, not a democracy. And that it pointed towards something greater, and that greater is Jesus Christ. Jesus said, "I have not come to abolish the law, but to fulfill it." He walked among outcasts. He sat with the marginalized. He challenged the self-righteous and stood with the oppressed. And ultimately, he gave his life, not for some sins, but for all sin. That includes mine. That includes yours. That includes everyone's. Because of Him, I strive to leave with compassion. Because of Him, I believe in extending grace to others just as I have received it. And because of Him, I cannot stand silent when members of our community are dismissed, devalued, or denied recognition of their humanity. This resolution does not call anyone to change their beliefs, abandon their faith, or compromise their convictions. It simply says that the people of Caddo Parish see our LGBTQ plus neighbors and we choose to treat them with respect, with the respect that every human being deserves. To affirm someone's dignity is not to deny God. In fact, I believe that it is to reflect Him more fully. I have no desire to allow fear, fear mongering to have rise. And that fear has already had consequences in our own backyard. Here in Caddo Parish, transgender women have been murdered simply for being who they are. I want to pause and honor their memory. Who Johnson, a 25-year-old makeup artist. Brooklyn DeShawna Smith, a 20, 20-year-old cosmetology student who had a bright future. Von Tasia Bell, just 18 years old when her life was taken. Valerie Miss Val McKinney, a woman who deserved to grow old with dignity. Terry Goldson and Freddie Henderson, whose names we say today to ensure that they are not forgotten. So, as we enter Pride Month, let us remember that Jesus taught us to love our neighbor. Not just the easy neighbor, not just the one that looks like us or believes like us, but every neighbor. As a man of faith, I believe that kind of love is the foundation of righteous leadership. Allow me to invoke the courage of Ms. Pamela Raintry. When she boldly proclaimed to the city council in 2011 that he who has not sinned, I welcome you to take this stone and cast it upon me first. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Parliamentarian Thomas. See, and no other discussion. Please vote.
Is your vote yes? Commissioner Barrell's vote is yes, in the affirmative. Okay, and that motion carries. That is passed with nine in support, three in opposition.
Okay.
And it is adopted and bringing us now to the end.
Mr. Clerk, I would like to ask that those from the community who are here to support this resolution, please join me in the front, please. Thank you.
Do you want me to read it? It's into the record now? Okay.
Please stand for the reading of the resolution.
Okay, and this is a proclamation reading. Whereas the Caddo Parish Commission is pleased to extend appropriate recognition to organizations which strive to make a positive impact on our community. And whereas equality of opportunity and freedom from discrimination are among the basic and alienable rights of every person, necessary for the development and exercise of our most vital capacities and preconditions of human flourishing. And whereas our nation was founded upon and is guided by a set of principles that includes every person has been created equal and that they have the right to the pursuit of happiness and that each shall be accorded the full recognition and protection of law. The Caddo Parish has become stronger by the rich, whereas Caddo Parish has become stronger by the rich diversity of its residents, all of which contribute to the vibrant character of our parish and illustrate the vastness of the range of human experience. And whereas Caddo Parish is home to PACE, people acting for change and equality, an organization of individuals working to ensure the full and equal protection, recognition and protection of the fundamental rights of LGBT people and their families. And whereas PACE was instrumental in crafting and passing Shreveport's fairness ordinance in 2014 banning discrimination based on race, sex, disability, age, ancestry, national origin, political or religious identification, gender identity, and sexual orientation. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the president of the Caddo Parish Commission that June 2025 is recognized as Pride Month in Caddo Parish, Louisiana, extending to all appreciation and gratitude for their service to this country, state, and parish for its efforts to focus the attention of the community upon those individuals and to their cause. Be it further resolved that all residents are encouraged to celebrate the progress within our culture towards justice, equality, and full civic recognition of all Caddo residents.
Thank you. You may be seated.
Okay. And we will pick up in a moment at number nine, which is going to be Communicates and Committee Reports.
And Administration response?
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
I just wanted to let you know, we're planning the intergovernmental meeting for Wednesday, June 25th. That's different from when we usually do the Friday. We had conflicts on Friday, wanted to get it done that month. We're still looking for, we're looking at a, a different location. So, we'll have more information to come on that. But did want to go ahead and give you a heads up that we were looking at Wednesday, June 25th. Just want to let you know, we are just reached out to Job Corps and offering our assistance however we can. And we are gonna follow their lead on that. They will communicate with us what they need and then we'll reach back out to you all if we need any funding or that nature. So, that concludes the Administration report. I'll take any questions at this time.
Thank you, Mrs. Bryant. I really appreciate you and the staff for staying on top of the issue. Though this is a federal issue, I really appreciate you all for getting involved per our request. And we are doing so many things behind the scenes. I, I know that there was a comment made earlier of the time that we spent during our meeting. I would like to state that our work began when we were in Birmingham, the Friday that they closed their doors. So, the portions that you may not hear here publicly does not mean that we're not working. We're often like that duck that you see gliding across the water. There's a whole lot of feet that are moving underneath that water. So, I want to thank you all for those who are working behind the scenes. And we will stay in close contact with this issue. We're following it very closely. And we are here for the, the students as well as the employees of Caddo Parish.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Vice President Epperson.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to state that on the situation as the Job Corps debacle, we have to understand where these emanate from, whose direct responsibility there is. Now, we did speak Monday about the, the, basically this, this came out of Washington DC. So, your senators, your congressmen hadn't heard anything. But I think finally we did get a statement from Congressman Fields after we spoke. However, we did, as, as, as Madam President stated, we heard about this while we was in Birmingham. And we started making phone calls as to what we could do from there, even before we were back in town. And there are a lot of other organizations that, that should become involved too. Oftentimes, there are legal ramifications that, and things that we can and we can't do. So, as the old saying go, in all things that you do, make sure that you get an understanding. So, let's make sure sometime these statements that we make, we make sure that we vetted them and we are making accusations in the right direction. Is the Public Works Director in?
They can be here, but Mr. Brandon Bradford is here, representing from Public Works.
I just want to know, are you familiar with the traffic monitoring devices that were put up in, in, in Caddo Parish? I've seen a lot of phone calls. A lot of people thought they were cameras. And we just want to make sure we get an update, get the factual information out there as to what that situation was.
Yes, sir. I did speak with the installer of the company yesterday. And he informed me that they were hired by the DOTD. And these cameras, they do not have the capability to record video footage. They only count traffic or vehicle movement. The cameras typically stay on the poles for two days, 48 hours. And I have the information for each location. So far, there have been a total of 1,025 locations where these cameras have been installed. But again, they only account traffic counts, vehicle movement.
Okay. We just wanted to make sure we got that information out. Some citizens was, I know in my district were calling me. And I understand that some people were sort of baffled and several of them had been shot and destroyed because it wasn't articulated and communicated to us as well as the citizen as to what was happening. And I think a lot of people got it confused with the legislation that's down in Baton Rouge about speed cameras and things of that nation, nature. So, it just shows, you know, if, if communication was a lot better, a lot of the situation would not happen.
Absolutely.
Also, Jefferson Page between I-220 West going toward Pine Road, the drilling is, is, is just really hyped up again. And you know, we've just repaved that road, I think, well, in the fall of last year.
I believe so, sir.
In the fall. And it is horrible. Do you hear me? Those sand trucks and those water trucks, they are destroying that road. I mean, it's literally cracking and sinking. And I think that was in the fall of last year that we just did that area. So, are we holding those, 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 those people accountable? They are definitely, I mean, mud is all in the road. They are, they, they, all that freshly paved asphalt is cracking and, and it's just horrible.
We do get in contact with them from time to time for certain requests. Like this issue that you're mentioning, I will need to look into it further and contact the oil company. And they will reimburse us for repairs, road repairs. So, that's, that's not an issue at all.
All right. Well, please mind because they, you know, they, you know who they gonna call.
Yes, sir.
And say we aren't doing what we're supposed to do. So, I wanted to make sure that, that, that we addressed that. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Also, Madam Administrator had, we gonna look at the, maybe looking at a couple of special vehicles with verbiage on it.
Yes, sir.
For as litter and, and sign, you know what I mean? Like the Louisiana Department of Transportation and Development, I think they call that MAPS, Motor Assistance Program you see on I-20.
Yes, we've.
I think when the people see us, you know, it, it, it helps a lot.
Yes, we've emailed to get the information on, on the contractor and, and the cost and that type of things. But we are researching to see how much that would cost and if we have the trucks and that type of thing to provide back to see what we can do to implement that.
Okay. All righty. And also, I'd like to invite everyone to tune into the June the 12th edition of the Grassroots Forum at 8 o'clock AM, a free teleconference which I sponsor. And we're gonna have Mr. Lonnie Miles, a Caddo Parish and a Shreveport native and a graduate of Southern University, who is a very successful businessman in, in, in Columbus, Ohio, Franklin County. He was the CEO of Miles McClellan Construction Company. He's now retired and sold it. However, he's still the managing partner in Universal Electric LLC. And he's gonna be a guest speaker so he can share some information with his successors within his business for our contracting community. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Epperson. Commissioner Roy Barrell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to first address this to the Administration as a follow-up on the 2504 Ridge Lake Drive. You know, we talked about that flooding situation. I did have an opportunity on the SWEPCO tour that Commissioner Carlton and I went on to talk with Tom Dark. I did talk to him about it, in which I'm gonna follow up there because it is a city situation. But I was hoping that our public workforce can give me some professional advice as to how I can work with the city to see if we can get some relief there. It's at the end of Ridge Lake Drive. It's right there next to Cross Lake. And when it rains a lot, the water backs up from the lake into the street. And, and, and they're, they're in an area where the water actually comes down on them on both sides.
What's that address again?
I'm sorry?
The address again? I know Ridge Lake. What was the number?
I believe it's 2504. It's Mr. Nita Jackson. 2504 Ridge Lake Drive.
We'll follow up.
Okay. The second thing is, I want to give a shout out to our 25th anniversary of, of our BizCamp Entrepreneur Summer Training Program. Some of you have already volunteered to be business plan judges for these young people. It's an excellent program. You know that I had to somewhat separate myself from it. I'm no longer the director, but I do volunteer. And I'm, I'm there almost every day. And I want to, to thank the G-Unit Foundation because they heard about our program through our national office, the National Foundation for Teaching Entrepreneurship. And, and they came in and asked to partner with us this year. So, we are very, very glad of that. Couple of things gonna take place. Our business plan competition will be on Wednesday. And as I said, we've invited, we've invited all of you over the years. And the other thing that is important to these young people that once they create their business and set up their work, their marketplace, their storefront, on Thursday the 12th, from 1:00 to 4:00, that's, that's on a Thursday, they will be at St. Vincent Mall. St. Vincent Mall is also one of our partners to allow them to set up their businesses there and come out and shop with them. We really appreciate it and ask them questions, what they've learned over the last two weeks. You'll be surprised of, of what these kids can absorb over a two, two-week period as it relates to business. And it's one of the only, only camps or one program where you actually make money. And that's what excites them. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Barrell. Thank you, Commissioner Barrell.
Thank you, Madam-
It's a non-parliamentarian, Victor Thomas.
Thank you, Madam President. I did just want to remind the public of a few events, there's a lot of events. I'm gonna try to get through them without forgetting any of them. Um, number one, the Social Con, um, Conference is gonna be this Saturday from nine to four, um, which is highlighting the contributions of, um, the social media industry and its growing, um, effects on our community. Um, it is the first convening of professionals in this area, um, that will be held at the, at eleven events. That's across from Elph for Brunch. Um, I invite the public to be there. Um, also, um, we are going to, um, and this is in your, um, District, Commissioner Epperson. I doubt you'll be out there in the heat with us, but on Sunday, the, um, as DJ Yoshi mentioned, the, um, the, um, International Rose and Wine Festival will be at the American, um, Gardens of the Rose Center. Um, also, um, on Friday, um, I'll have the opportunity to attend the Grambling Gala, um, which will be held at Samstown. Um, I'm gonna try to remember a few more of them and I'll be back later on.
All right.
It's quite a few, so.
Commissioner Grace Ann Blake.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to let everyone know that this evening Art Port is going on. I fly frequently out of Shreveport. I've always loved our Shreveport, um, and I love seeing the art from our community. And so I'm looking forward to, well, so this year they have upgraded the airport and done a renovation that's really spectacular. It's immediately noticeable if you haven't flown out of Shreveport recently. Um, so if you happen to fly and get stuck sitting for a while, you're gonna do so comfortably with, uh, food options to eat and it's wonderful. And tonight they're going to have music and, um, releasing new art. And so I'm looking forward to that. And thank you for sharing the other events. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Commissioner Stefan Jones.
Thank you, Madam President. Just wanted to remind everyone, uh, that a community partner needs help with their food pantry. Uh, they need proteins and pasta, pasta, like small jars of peanut butter, hearty soups, chili, ravioli, tuna, sardine, spaghetti, elbow macaroni and things of that nature. Uh, this is Common Ground Community. Their address is 6806 Southern Avenue. Their contact number is 318-606-5024. So if you have, um, some extra items that you can donate to the food pantry, please do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Ron Cartheron.
Thank you, Madam President. The, uh, just wanted to share a couple of things. First thing before I forget, uh, because we would, would not have had a meeting, uh, prior to. I want to say Happy Father's Day to all fathers in Caddo Parish on June the 15th. Uh, as Commissioner Barrell stated, he and I had an opportunity to go on the SWEPCO tour and it was really rewarding and I found out a lot of things that I'm sure that the citizens are not aware of. And we talked about getting a one-pager, uh, to actually get the information out to some of the, uh, citizens within the parish and going from there. Also, uh, there's going to be a Father's Day Run, 5K Run Walk on, uh, 7 June 25th of this year at eight-thirty. And lastly, uh, Beulah Safe Haven is having a musical concert at Mount Canaan at four o'clock on the 7th of June as well. And yours truly will be the guest speaker. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Commissioner Cartheron. And that 5K Run and Walk, aren't you a part of that as well? It, and that's at Southern Hills Park, correct? All right. Registration at eight AM? Eight-thirty. All right.
That you're walking, aren't you?
He leading the walk.
All right. Second time around, Parliamentarian Thomas.
Thank you. I did want to, um, clarify, I misspoke earlier. The American, um, the Rose and Wine Festival will be held at the Convention Center. So it's moving to District Three, the best district in our parish. Um, but, um, also, once again, um, the, um, Adult Field Day is gonna be held by RISE, the local organization RISE. Um, their aim is to promote health and wellness. Um, also, Field Day will be held this Saturday, um, at the AC Steer Park. Um, uh, I think that's it for right now.
What time?
Um, it is, begins at eight o'clock, I believe, for registration. Um, also, um, I want to thank, um, my colleagues. I wasn't able to attend the, um, the, um, SWEPCO, um, tour, um, due to, um, a medical reason. But, um, I want to thank y'all for relaying that, um, information from the citizens of Allen Dale and Lakeside. There's been a number of outages going on, um, related to repair. And I want to thank y'all for, um, relaying that message to Mr. Corbin. I want to thank him for the work that they're doing to improve the, um, prevention of additional out, outages in our area. So, thank you so much. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Parliamentarian Thomas. Mrs. CEO, I just have one request. If you would, I know we've started a preliminary conversation about doing the food distribution. If you would, um, see, um, if we can get one as soon as possible.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
And put some on the next agenda.
All right.
Does that conclude?
I believe.
Hold on.
Checking hands.
I just received something from Commissioner Young. I do know I've spoken twice without, do you, Madam, speak for you? I'm sorry, Commissioner Cartheron. I was looking at you.
And just go by the bottle heat.
It's, it's quite a few over there. It's quite a few over there. Um, the, um, I think these, these are way too many. That are twenty-six and stuff. I got you. Thank you, though. Uh, but I, if, if you want me to out, uh, if the Grambling Night wants me to, I will announce that Southern University Alumni Foundation will be having a leadership summit here at the end of the month.
Thank you, Parliamentarian Thomas. I don't see anyone else on the board.
Okay. That brings us to President's Report.
All right. Um, I think most of the items that I had have already been covered. I heard about the ORSKY that is happening right now that we're trying to get to in District Seven, but I think it's going on until nine o'clock tonight. I wanted to highlight, um, just a little information about our trip that we attended last week to NABCO, which is the National Association of Black Elected County Officials. Of course, we're a parish here in Louisiana. The Economic Development Conference, where we left with a wealth of knowledge. However, we didn't just leave with something, we brought something. I would like to acknowledge our colleague, the distinguished Commissioner Roy Barrell, who served on the panel about broadband in the community, leveraging B for broadband justice. He did a phenomenal job. We are very proud of his service. And we have a new inside joke, so I'm gonna tell you all about it to my colleagues. We learned on this trip, one of the most valuable lessons and that we're bringing back to share with you, that Commissioner Roy Barrell can answer a question in one sentence. He surprised us all with that. Uh, but we are excited about the information that we, we brought back and we're looking forward to using it to enhance our work here in Caddo Parish. Thank you.
Does that conclude your, uh, President's Report?
That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. That, uh, so we would move forward. We don't have any public hearings on zoning ordinances today, so we would move to public hearing on ordinances. Uh, where you, do you have a number of them? Would you like me to read them, uh, first and then open one hearing or?
Yes, please. If you would, just read all of the ones. I think we just have two in that area, right?
Um, we have, let's see, we have a few, uh, because we also have the millages on this section.
Okay.
So these-
Yes, read all of them and then I will open up one public hearing.
That sounds great. We'll start with 12.1, a public hearing for ordinance 6535. That's an ordinance to set the general purpose and special purpose millages, providing for millage rate adjustments as allowed by Article Seven, Section 23 of the Louisiana Constitution of 1974 and Louisiana Revised Statutes 471705B, levying and imposing taxes and assessments for 2025 on all the properties subject to taxation in the parish of Caddo and to otherwise provide, with respect thereto. Uh, the next item is, uh, public hearing for ordinance 6536. That's an ordinance to set the general purpose and special purpose millages, providing for an increase in the millage rates not to, not in excess of the prior year's maximum rates as allowed by Article Seven, Section 23 of the Louisiana Constitution of 1974 and Louisiana Revised Statutes 471705B, levying and imposing taxes and assessments for 2025 on all the properties subject to taxation in the parish of Caddo and to otherwise provide, with respect thereto. The next item is, uh, public hearing for ordinance 6537, uh, which is an ordinance setting the parish millage for the purpose of paying principal and interest due in 2025 on outstanding parish bond issues and to instruct the assessor to include said millage on the tax rolls of the parish of Caddo for the year 2025 and to otherwise provide, with respect thereto. Following that is a public hearing for ordinance 6538. That's an ordinance setting the assessment of property classified as timberlands and to instruct the assessor to include said assessment on the tax rolls of the parish of Caddo for the year 2025 and otherwise provide, with respect thereto. That brings us now to a public hearing for ordinance 6539, an ordinance to adopt the values fixed or to be fixed by the Louisiana Tax Commission on all assessments for railways and other public service corporations and to instruct the assessor to extend such assessments and values on the tax rolls of the parish of Caddo for the year 2025 and to otherwise provide, with respect thereto. That brings us now to a public hearing for ordinance 6545 of 2025. That is an ordinance amending the budget of estimated revenues and expenditures for the oil and gas and economic development funds to appropriate funds for SkyWest Airlines. That is a recommendation of the Economic Development Committee. The next and final item in this, is a public hearing for ordinance 6546 of 2025, which is an ordinance declaring certain adjudicated properties to be surplus and to authorize the parish administrator or a designee to sell the parish of Caddo's tax interests in certain surplus adjudicated properties and to otherwise provide, with respect thereto. Those items are in District Three.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to open for a public hearing on ordinance number 6535, 6536, 6537, 6538, and 6539. Is there anyone here to speak in favor or against any of these ordinances? Seeing none, I declare this public hearing on those ordinances closed. Now, at this time, I would like to open the public hearing for ordinance number 6545, 6546. That's it. Is there anyone here to speak in favor or against ordinance number 6545 or ordinance number 6546? Seeing none, I declare this public hearing closed.
Okay. Then, uh, we will move, we do not have any zoning ordinances for final passage today. Uh, so we'll move forward to ordinances for final passage where, uh, the items that you just had a public hearing for, uh, are the ordinances that you are able to adopt at this point. Ordinance 6535 is an ordinance to set the general purpose and special purpose millages, providing for millage rate adjustments as allowed by Article Seven, Section 23 of the Louisiana Constitution of 1974 and Louisiana Revised Statutes 471705B, levying and imposing taxes and assessments for 2025 on all the properties subject to taxation in the parish of Caddo and to otherwise provide, with respect thereto.
All right. I have a motion by Parliamentarian Thomas, been seconded by Commissioner Ron Cartheron. Parliamentarian Thomas, would you like to speak on your motion?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to move to englobo and adopt ordinance 6535, ordinance 6536, ordinance 6535, ordinance 6538, and ordinance 6539.
All right. That is ordinance 6535, 36, 37, 38, and 39?
Yes.
That's the millages? Okay. And that was seconded by Commissioner Ron Cartheron. Would you like to speak on your motion?
Um, no, thank you, ma'am.
Okay. Commissioner Cartheron?
Thank you, Madam President. I, I would like to defer to the, uh, parish administrator because the thing is, again, even though we're looking at this and we understand exactly what we're looking at, uh, the public don't necessarily, and I'm not gonna say they don't understand, but I think in this particular case, uh, when we're talking about millage, you need to know exactly what we're voting on at this particular time.
Uh, Commissioners, uh, you're voting on the, to set the millage rates for 2025. Um, this will be our bond rate, our special revenue funds, our general fund, as well as those special ones we have to do for, uh, timberland and railway. Um, in this case, we are asking on, um, 6536 to, uh, set the rates at the maximum authorized by the voters. The voters, uh, authorized that and so we did have a reassessment last year. And, um, so this year we're asking to bring those millage rates back to the maximum. We lowered them last year, but we're asking for them to be, um, um, set at the maximum rate. Um, we provided an analysis on 6536 that shows you the difference in, um, cost. I think for a $250,000 home, it would be $82 a year, um, additional in taxes if that, uh, ordinance was to pass. Um, these funds are being used. You all have not, um, uh, set your rate at the maximum of, 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 done this process in over 20 years. As we look at our expenses and as we continue to have to manage the criminal justice cost, we're, we're needing those funds. And the result of additional properties coming on the road as we increase those funds just to manage that operation. It is 30% of our budget. Um, and so it is a, uh, it's a struggle each year to try to, uh, maintain those, uh, those expenses at the level that we're required to by law. Much of that is not within our control. It is within other agencies, but we have to fund it. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Commissioner Cartheron. Commissioner John E. Atkins.
Thank you, Madam, Madam President. Um, I'd like to request, I'd like to request your friendly amendment, uh, to pull 6536 out of the englobo district to be considered separately.
Okay. Um, before you continue with your statement, would you accept that?
I'll accept that. I'll accept the request.
Thank you, Commissioner Atkins.
Thank you. Um, and as, uh, CEO Bryant was just saying, uh, just for, for everybody out there and, uh, that may be listening to the meeting, ordinance 6535 lowers our taxes and then 6536 allows us to rise them back up, uh, to the maximum level.
Right. Well, 6535 will maintain what you currently have. It's not gonna lower, it's just maintaining what you adopted.
Maintaining, it maintains the, maintains the level of tax.
Yes.
And then, uh, 6536 allows us to increase that level as our-
It allows us to go to the maximum authorized by them.
Thank you. That's why I've asked to pull 6536 out for individual consideration. Thank you, Madam.
Back, back to the level we had in 2023. Thank you. Commissioner John Paul Young?
Um, Madam Chair, I was going to speak about, um, the one that was just pulled, so I'll wait until we vote on that.
Okay. Seeing no other discussion? Mr. Clerk, if you would, please read what we're voting on at this time. The englobo and adoption omitting 6536.
Absolutely. It's a, uh, so this would be to, uh, englobo and adopt ordinance 6535, ordinance 65, which is the one setting the general purpose and special millage rates. Then ordinance 6537, uh, which is the one that is, uh, setting the, um, uh, the millage rates for the bond, uh, bond issue. Uh, then 6538, which is the one, uh, adopting the millages for timberlands. And 6539, which is the ones for public, uh, service assessments. Um, and so those would be the ones that are included in this item.
Please vote.
And Commissioner Greg Young. Thank you. Okay, that motion carries with 11 in support, one in opposition. Uh, and that would bring us now to the consideration of ordinance 6536.
Okay.
I'd, uh-
Point of order.
Whatever. I'd like to correct my prior vote.
I missed it. Did you?
It was a technical glitch.
It was a, yes, uh-huh.
Okay.
It was, it was just a technical glitch.
Okay.
Point of order.
Is that noted? Mr. Clerk?
We will note that in the record and make that change.
All right. All right.
Okay. Uh, ordinance 6536 is an ordinance to set the general purpose and special purpose millages, providing for an increase in the millage rates not in excess of the prior year's maximum rates as allowed by Article Seven, Section 23.
It's been moved by Parliamentarian Thomas and seconded by Vice President Epperson. Parliamentarian Thomas, would you like to speak on your motion?
Um, I believe, um, administration has already clarified this. I'll, I'll give.
Thank you. Vice President Epperson?
You know.
Thank you. Commissioner John Paul Young?
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, I'd like to speak briefly about this because, um, it's an important issue in our parish. Uh, before I speak about this tax, I would like to, um, remind everyone, uh, who's listening and my colleagues. Some of them weren't here at the time. Um, in a previous term, I was the swing vote. I was widely considered to be the swing vote. That was a lot of fun sometimes, but it was also a lot of pressure. That was a lot of fun sometimes, but it was also a lot of pressure. And this, this term, I'm not the swing vote, except perhaps on votes that require a super majority of eight votes. This vote does require a super majority of eight votes, so I think it makes sense for me to state my reasons for voting. Before I do that, I would like to say, in a previous term, I was the swing vote, voting no to raise my own pay, serving on this body, and I withheld the same pay raise from everyone else on this body by voting no. So I want the voters to know, I have not voted myself a pay raise, I have voted down a pay raise for myself, and I could have used that money. The parish also needs money for important goals. One of those is our criminal justice system. Recent events in my neighborhood have made it very, very painfully clear to me how critical it is to support every aspect of law enforcement. We need, in the short term, in my neighborhood, places to take people into custody before they harm us. And the parish operates the jail that has the beds where the police can take people they arrest. If that jail is totally full, even at its superextended capacity of 1,500, there will be a huge crisis in my neighborhood and in many other neighborhoods, because police may say, there is no space in the jail, I will not arrest, and harm will result to people. Our jail is overcrowded. It has been overcrowded for a really long time, but it has become much more acute recently. In order to bring down our jail population, we need courts, which the parish pays for, and we need more judges, and in order to do that, we'll need more money. We need lawyers, because everyone who is arrested has a constitutional right to an attorney if they choose one. The public defender's office is not locally funded to any significant degree, unlike in other places in our state. That is a crisis here. It results in very long stays in our jail, which, in some people's opinion, violates their constitutional rights. It also results in huge bills for medicine, especially from our jail, which we struggle to pay. We also need prosecutors, and they always need more money to pay people competitively so that they will stay and put the right people behind bars and make the right plea deals for other people. And we need more resources for our juvenile justice system, which is constantly overstretched, underfunded, and feeds an enormous number of our young people into our adult jail as soon as they turn 15, or 16, or 17, or 18, depending on what they've done. So in order to do all of that stuff, we need money, and those are important things that are critical for public safety. Without that money, we're not going to make any progress toward making, keeping space in our jail, giving people justice when they're arrested, and creating an environment of public safety and a higher quality of life here, especially through our young people, who need more probation and less incarceration. They need more guidance and less punishment in many cases. Some of my colleagues will vote against raising this money, which the public have voted us the authority to raise. Like, the public have already said, we can charge this much for the things that we need, and we need it. When we don't charge that money, we give the public a small rebate on their taxes, but it comes at a huge cost to neighborhoods that are open to the public, maybe not all neighborhoods, some neighborhoods are far flung, some neighborhoods are sealed off from the public with gates. My neighborhood is in the thick of things. We need public safety. We need all the governments, all the parts of the governments, to collaborate to restore public safety in the city of Shreveport and in Caddo Parish generally. The public have authorized us to charge as much money as this ordinance will charge, and to use that money for criminal justice, specifically for our underfunded jail and court systems and legal system, and for our juvenile system, which is critical. If we make that rebate again and decline to collect this money, the public will suffer more than if they pay $100 more a year on a $200,000 house. They will suffer more if they find that there is someone in their neighborhood doing methamphetamine, about to burn down the house next door to them, and there is no place to lock that person up, even in the short term, before they get some other kind of disposition, whether it's treatment or whatever. Therefore, I'm going to vote in favor of this. I'm not voting for more money for myself, as I have proved in the past, but we need this money to have a functioning criminal justice system, and it does not even pay all the bills. It just makes the hole a little more shallow. Some of my colleagues will vote against this, but this has been a perennial problem since the very first budget meeting I went to. Our, at that time, assistant attorney, our assistant administrator told us what a critical problem it was, how we were really just kicking the can down the road, and of the colleagues who were there at that time, and the colleagues who have come online since then, who I, who I expect will vote against this money, raising this money to pay for this criminal justice system, never has anyone made a suggestion of how to solve or improve this problem, ever, not in public, not in private. The closest anyone has ever come was to say that we should suspend all of our crime prevention efforts, all of the resources that we give to organizations that keep people from getting close to our jail in the first place, and spend that money instead on a jail. But I don't want to live in a city or a parish where there's nothing but a jail. We can't live like that. We have to do more than one thing, but we absolutely need the money that the public authorized us to collect to have a functioning criminal justice system, and that's why I'm going to vote in favor of this. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Commissioner Jean-Paul Young. Commissioner Ron Cartheron?
Thank you, Madam President. I too will be voting favorably for this, but the question that I have to Madam Administrator, how long has it been since we've actually done what the citizens have authorized us to do as far as being able to get the actual amounts of monies as far as millage goes?
So you have to, we have a reassessment process every four years where you have to do this. The last time we did this was 2001. We did it again in an off-cycle year, 2000 was the reappraisal year, and we presented to you all a financial plan whereby, again, it was criminal justice.
2001?
2001 was the last time that we actually raised our rates to the maximum authorized by the voters. Every, every time after that, we lowered our rates. This is, and so we're looking at the fact that, as, as we all know, our expenses continue to increase. We understand that the citizens do, but the parish is having to provide services to those citizens, and our costs are increasing. And when we had, if you all don't recall, we had to lay off workers, we had financial issues, and a lot of that was related to criminal justice, and we came to, to the commission, the finance department, the director at the time, the administrator at that time, and said, we need two things. One, we need you to roll forward the millages. Two, we need a rededication. We cannot fund what we're funding based on the dollars that we have. And that, and those initiatives, the voters did the rededication, and we did the roll forward. We have not done it again since then. And when we did it in 2001, it was several years before. So this commission should take credit for the fact that you all have elected not to do that when you could, can, but we feel like at this time it's necessary. We wouldn't ask unless it was necessary, because we recognize that the commission does not take that lightly, and we recognize that it is something that we're asking the citizens to pay, but in order to provide the quality service that this commission has come to expect and provide for their citizens, we think that it's necessary.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, and also listening to Commissioner Young as well, since 2001, we have been basically working with the monies that we have been allocated year after year after year, and at this particular time in 2025, you're asking us, well, let's look at, look at it like this. In 2001, the money that was made back then definitely would not survive in 2025, and that's the easiest way to look at it. Thank you, Madam Administrator.
All right. Commissioner Gregory Young?
Thank you, Madam President. I just have one quick question. What are your projections in terms of how much revenue this millage should generate?
So just for 2025, based on the assessment from 2024, we calculated 700,000, but the key is, as you bring new properties on the road, we'll be assessing those at this rate. And so we expect that that number will grow over time, because we're now being able to assess at a higher rate for the new properties coming on the road.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Roy Barrell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm just sitting here listening. For the life of me, I'm just puzzled why it's so hard to, or so painful to vote to raise our rates after the taxpayers have authorized us to do so. It's just too political these days, and a lot of it is partisan politics. And if the need is there, and the voters have given us that leadway to do so, I'm, I'm just, like I said, I'm just bum puzzled as to why we can't, why it's so painful for some to do it, but that's, you know, that's, that's the reality that we live in. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Atkins, you've already spoken. Vice President Everson?
Madam Chair, I'd like to call for the question.
Second, okay. We have a motion to call for the question is for second, I think I heard Commissioner Stephanie Jones also somewhere. Is that correct? Okay, all right.
Madam Chairman, have I actually spoken on this topic? I made the, I made the motion, I guess.
I thought you made, no, who made the motion? I'm sorry, it may have been the last one.
I'm not sure that I, my memory's not great, but I'm not sure that I spoke.
Excuse me. Commissioner Atkins did speak on the englobo. He has not spoken on this, I apologize.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Am I up?
You would have been before Commissioner Everson.
Right, so thank you.
Okay.
I just want to remind us all that it sounds like we haven't increased our revenue, that the parish hasn't reached our, increased our revenue since 2001, I think was the number Ms. Bryant said. But remember, each time the underlying properties of Caddo Parish increase in value, you know, the, all the properties that are in Caddo Parish, as they increase in value, the assessed value of those, of those properties is reflected in our taxes, and our taxes increase with that. So I, I want to make sure we all understand, you know, there's this implication, or this, one might mistakenly take away that we haven't increased our tax base at all since 20, since 2001, but, but each time the underlying value of the properties increase, our revenue increases with that. So that's how we've been able to, to manage this process moving forward. And so just want to make sure we all understood that fact. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Commissioner Atkins. Mrs. CEO, would you like to respond to that?
Yes, I think with Commissioner Atkins is more so the, that's purely new properties coming on the road. Your assessment doesn't change for four years, and what we do once that assessment changed for our current property, we lower our rate so that that individual taxpayer will not pay additional in taxes. So since 2001, persons that were on the road as 2001, tax bill should not have increased from the parish. Now, when you bring new properties on the road, then yes, you're getting additional revenue, because that property didn't pay taxes before. Or if you sell a home and it comes on at a higher assessment than maybe it was previously before you sold it, that's how we've gotten revenue in the past. But an individual taxpayer who, who maintained their homes since 2001 should not have seen an increase from the parish. We have not asked for that increase. We've lowered our rate in order to. That's how that works. It has, we have been able to maintain, but we're recognizing that as we're in this climate of continued growth of cost, our costs just to do our projects have doubled. Our costs for our supplies have doubled.
Right.
So those are the type of things that we're facing now in the current climate, and that we now still have to provide services. That's why at this time, we think that we need additional.
Wait for those tariffs to kick in.
Okay, thank you. All right, I see no other discussion. The motion on the floor is to call for the question by Vice President Everson, and seconded by Commissioner Stephanie Jones. Please vote.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Madam President, we're voting on which, which one?
Calling for the question.
This is called for the question. And that motion carries. That's 10 in support, two in opposition.
Point of order. Commissioner Grayson Blake, would you like to correct your vote?
Sure.
Okay, thank you very much. So that's 11 in support.
It is.
That's 11 in support, one in opposition, and so that motion does carry. So now we will move forward to the consideration of ordinance 6536, is our motion to adopt.
Yes.
Okay, and that motion carries with eight in support, four in opposition, and brings us to the next item, which is going to be ordinance...
You have another one?
I'm sorry, I thought that first englobo did not include 6545, yes.
Nor 6546.
Correct, yes. So we're at 6545 of 2025, an ordinance amending the budget of estimated revenues and expenditures for the oil and gas and economic development funds to appropriate funds for SkyWest Airlines.
All right, we have a motion and a second. It's been moved by Parliamentarian Thomas, seconded by Commissioner Jean-Paul Young. Parliamentarian Thomas?
Yes, Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to englobo and adopt ordinance 6545, as well as ordinance 6546, and I will yield to Administration or yourself, if you'd like to say anything regarding that. Myself, I would like to, I'd like to let my colleagues know that District 3, I have no opposition to that. Thank you.
All right.
For ordinance 6546.
Thank you. All right. Commissioner Jean-Paul Young? Okay. Madam Administrator? I saw you going for the mic.
Well, I thought he said he was deferring. I thought there was a question, but I think Commissioner Thomas explained it.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Commissioners, as you already know and well aware, this is to support the largest regional airline carrier in the U.S. that has already opened at the Shreveport Regional Airport. It's a state-of-the-art maintenance facility, providing over 500 jobs, looks like, at this point, and the facility will service SkyWest fleet of 500 commercial and aircraft operating partnerships with major airlines, including Delta, United, Alaska, and American Airlines. Make sure you support on this ordinance. Seeing no other discussion? Please vote.
Yes.
You say it with such confidence, Commissioner Jones. Thank you so much.
And that motion does carry with 11 in support, one in opposition, and brings us, we have no zoning ordinances for introduction by title. We do have two regular ordinances. The first is introducing ordinance 6547 of 2025. That's an ordinance amending Article 3 of Chapter 19 of the Code of Ordinances relative to the E. Edward Jones Housing Trust Fund to expand the Technical Review Committee and otherwise provide with respect thereto. That comes from the Long Range Planning Committee and is set for a public hearing on July 3rd. The next item is advancing ordinance, oh, I'm sorry, the introduction of ordinance 6548 of 2025. That's an ordinance amending the budget of estimated revenues and expenditures for the Debt Service Fund and the Capital Outlet Fund to provide an appropriation of $10,000, $10 million to the construction of a pickleball park and to otherwise provide with respect thereto. That also is on a public hearing on July 3rd, and that brings us now to consideration of adopting your work session minutes of your June 2nd meeting.
All right, it's been moved by Parliamentarian Thomas, seconded by Commissioner Gregory Young. Parliamentarian Thomas, would you like to speak on your motion?
Yes, Madam President, I'd like to motion to adopt and englobo and adopt ordinance item number 17.1, as well as 18.1.
Okay, and we have a motion to englobo and adopt. Commissioner Thomas, and I think that was seconded by Commissioner Stephanie Jones. All right. Seeing no discussion? Seeing no discussion, please vote.
Thank you. All right, that motion carries with 12 in support, none in opposition. And brings us to your new business section where the first item is the selection of your 2025, 2026 official journal. And you have proposals from the Shreveport Times and the Caddo Citizen, Shreveport Sun, joint proposal. It would be appropriate if, when making a motion, you just move to select and then whoever you're choosing to select, and then once that's seconded, we can do a vote on that.
All right. I have a motion on the floor by Parliamentarian Victor Thomas and second by Vice President Ken Emerson, Senior. Parliamentarian Thomas, would you like to speak on your motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we consider and adopt the Shreveport Times as the official journal.
Okay, and that's been seconded by Vice President Emerson. Parliamentarian Thomas, would you like to speak on it?
I won't speak, but I will yield to Commissioner Jones. I did believe, I saw his hand in his board's number.
The motion, okay. Vice President Emerson, would you like to speak on your motion? Okay, all right. Seeing no one on the board to speak, please vote.
For the Shreveport Times, that was the motion, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
I don't know, was that your answer to Commissioner Atkins?
Okay, and that motion carries with 11 in support, one in opposition. And brings us to 20.2, which is the appointment of Dr. Caleb Killian to the Animal Services Board to fill an unexpired term of Dr. Brad Emerson. And that term would be set to expire 1/1/27.
Okay, and it's been moved by Parliamentarian Thomas, second by Vice President Emerson. Parliamentarian Thomas?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the recommendation from the Animal Services Board.
All right, and it's been seconded by Vice President Emerson. Seeing no discussion, please vote. Are you, oh, you want to speak?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I'd like to, to move to accept the recommendations of the animal and englobo, the Animal Services Board and the Property Standards Committee.
So that would be a motion to englobo and adopt items 20.2, 20.4, 20.5, 20.6, and 20.7?
Yes, sir.
And just as a reminder, did you want to include item 20.8, which was the agenda addition, accepting the NGO?
Did we do that early?
No, we did not.
There wasn't mention of it, but it wasn't clear.
But it wasn't in the specialism.
Oh, okay.
Because it was under new business. Okay.
Okay, yes, I'd like to do that.
So 20.3 is the only one that's not in this englobo, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Commissioner Atkins.
You just clarified that 20.3 was not in the motion. Okay, so I withdraw my.
Okay, all right. Please vote.
And Commissioner Jones? And Commissioner Blake? Thank you very much. That motion carries with 12 in support, none in opposition. And brings us to 20.3, which is an animal appeal hearing. And we have Allison McNeely is the appellant and she is here today and to appeal the Animal Services Board decision regarding her dog Lucy. You do have attached a case file, an appeal letter, and your electronic agenda, agenda should have some additional factual evidence that's included in that case file.
All right. At this time, we're going to open it up for the animal appeal process. Director Clark is here. Director Samuel here. All right.
How y'all doing today?
Hello.
Thank you. How are you?
All right. All right, so this is, this appeal, as Jeff said, is about a dog named Lucy. Lucy was already deemed dangerous back in February. And to give you the definitions for the vicious dog, any dog that has attacked and caused severe and gross injuries or death to a human being, she hasn't bit a person. Previously been classified as a dangerous, as dangerous and subsequent thereto in violation of Section 1434, which is the Dangerous Dog Ordinance, has previously been classified as dangerous and is found to be at large two or more times, a dog which has exhibited behavior which enables the director or the animal advisory board to reasonably conclude that the animal may not safely coexist with people. All right, so she was deemed dangerous back in February. There was an incident in January where Lucy and the other dog that lives with Lucy named Zeus got out of the house. Someone was walking a dog up the street on a leash. Lucy allegedly attacked that dog. A citizen that was, witnessed it, a witness tried to get Lucy back to her home, but stopped at her house prior to taking Lucy home. Loose, she's allegedly, Lucy barged into her house and attacked her dog. That dog ended up dying. After these events, we ended up with the dogs. Owners agreed to deem them dangerous. Didn't go before the board. They repaired the fence, fixed the fence, added new sections to the fence and whatnot. The dogs were released February 12th. Well, in April, Lucy got out again and attacked another person's dog that was walking their dog on a leash. So Lucy was impounded again. We eventually made contact with the owner, advising that we withhold the dog for a vicious dog board. Owner stated that they would put a fence in the front yard and things of that nature because the fence was only around the back of the yard. I advise to wait till you go through the board because we don't know if they will keep the dog listed as dangerous or vicious. When a dog is deemed vicious in Caddo Parish, the owner does not get the dog back. The dog is destroyed. So I would hate for a person to do these additional things prior to going through the board and then they don't get the dog back. So now they've spent more money. So that is the situation we're dealing with today.
Thank you, Director Clark. Is, are there any, okay. Commissioner Jean Paul Young?
Thank you, Madam President. Director Clark, can you tell us what happened to the, at the time of the second dog attack that gave rise to this hearing? What happened to the, was it, did the dog attack a person or another dog?
It attacked another dog.
And what happened to that dog?
Owner took it to the vet. It got checked out. Dog is fine, but it was attacked. Last, multiple lacerations and things. I tried to attach the photos. I'm not sure if you have those in your link. There are multiple photos, multiple witness statements from people who witnessed the events. Also, those case files are in there. Think that first case back in January, Officer Babs worked that one. He's very detailed, so. He goes, he goes from A to Z. He covered all of the bases. Tried to ensure that, you know, the dogs would be properly confined and for whatever circumstance or incident, the dog got out again. So that's why we're here.
Thank you.
And just to confirm, those pictures are attached on your agenda. They're just, if for some reason you don't see them, you just need to refresh it.
Oh, from the, from the first case file?
Oh.
Now I see it all. Okay. I will, I'll close just by saying this is in my district, but it's in, it's about three blocks from Commissioner Blake's house. It's very concerning to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jean Paul Young. Okay, I see no other questions for Director Clark. This time, we're going to hear from the appellant. Mr. Clark, you ready to swear in?
Hello.
Good evening.
And before we start, if we could, and actually Director Clark, if you could as well, we're going to administer a quick oath and you'll just need to respond to this question I'm about to ask. And it's just, do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God, under the pains and penalties of perjury?
I do.
Okay, and for the record, both responded affirmatively.
Thank you. Take your time and we're here to hear from your side of the story.
So the first time they had gotten out, you know, it was completely by accident. I understand it's my responsibility to keep them in the home and keep them safe and keep everybody else safe. Zeus and Lucy, they date. They, he sits by the window and just waits for her to come home now. But I don't want my dog to die, but I understand that she has hurt another dog. Whenever she first got out and they attacked the dogs the first time, I never found out the details of what had happened when Officer Babs showed up.
I just want to interject right here. I don't think that the recommendation is to euthanize this animal, is it?
They want to kill her.
Okay. Okay.
We got the fence put up and everything and the second time she had gotten out, she got out the front door. She had, we just had too much going on and I understand that it's my responsibility to keep her in the home and keep her safe. And so we don't even let them in the front half of the house. Like they have a big backyard. They have their own room and everything. And now we've put up a gate around our front door. It's not like a, like a full security gate, but you know, just like another barrier. I never found out the details from the first incident. Whenever I talked with Officer Babs, he said that it was an ongoing investigation and he couldn't tell me anything. But I know whenever the, the first time they got out, they told us, hey, if you want to go ahead and go along with the director's decision to mark him as dangerous, kind of like you'll get them back quicker. Like, don't fight the system. They got out, they did something wrong, had to go to puppy jail. Agree that they're dangerous and they can come home. Okay, sure, whatever, we get our dogs back. And you know, that was obviously under the assumption that they're never, ever, ever going to get out again. And I wish I'd bought it the first time because then we'd be at a different step now, but now they just want to kill her.
That's okay. I understand. There are no Commissioners that are on the board for any, you have a question? Okay. Commissioner Blake?
We, did it skip a step? I'm confused why it wasn't to the muzzle. It, because it was muzzled once. Once it's muzzled. Yeah, I'm going to ask you to, yeah, help answer this. Because I, we, when we did the last hearing, the animal hearing, I thought there was like a process. There was another step before the euthanizing.
It was already deemed dangerous. You guys didn't hear that appealed?
Okay.
It was not appealed, so it didn't come to us.
Oh. Okay. So my question is, I do have a question for you, ma'am. The, when it attacked the dog.
The first time or second?
The second, the one that passed away. The owner was trying to get it back to you of that dog? Somebody else was bringing it back to you?
So the very first day they ever got out, literally, we're headed down to Pipes to go get parts for our car. Our car breaks down on Line Avenue on the way down to Pipes to get, it's a short, long story. We're headed down to Pipes to get parts for the car. We break down on Line Avenue in front of Betty Virginia Park. We parked the car there. We have to take an Uber down to Pipes. We're down at Pipes when we get the phone call from our neighbor that our dogs are out. So we're down at Pipes with no car. I had to bum a ride from a stranger to get back to my house. And that's whenever I find out that, you know, what had happened. Officer Babs was on my street and that's whenever he told me that Lucy, whenever she saw the puppy police coming, she ran back to the house. That's what I was told that day. And so I didn't know whether or not, I knew that two dogs had gotten injured and then a person had gotten scratched. But that's all the information I got from the very first incident. At that point in time, they never even told us, like, exactly what was going to happen, just that they needed Lucy back. And at some point in time, whenever they were on the street, Lucy had run back into the house. He informed me that he secured the door and made sure, you know, that she didn't get back out. But I said, you know, where's her boyfriend? Where's Zeus? And he was gone. We didn't even find out for over a week that he was still alive because a guy two blocks over from our house told us that he shot him. So we're thinking that our other dog's dead for a week. Finally, we call animal control and they're like, oh, no, we got Zeus. We had to turn Lucy in. Because whenever she ran back in the home with everything that was going on, they gave us 48 hours to turn her back over to them. So Zeus and Lucy were up at the dog pound for, it was over a month. And that gave us time to get the fence built and, you know, we got a privacy fence like around and goes halfway down our driveway, all the way to our house. And it was the second time that she got out. She barreled out through the front door, which usually we have a little gate up inside the house, so she can't even get in the front half of the house at all. She's not people aggressive at all, like 100 to 10%. She's not people aggressive. She has a high prey drive. She's, she's a Dogo Argentino. She's bred for hunting hogs. And I mean, I understand with each different breed of dog comes different responsibilities. Her prey drive is high. Like this dog, you know, she sleeps in the bed with us. Like she, 110%, like she loves people. Like the, the person that got scratched, that was not intentional. I mean, obviously, none of it was like intentional, but like her, she's a dog, she's an animal and her prey drive is high. I understand that it's my responsibility to keep her safe inside the home and, and that is on me. I wanted to just kill her.
Parliamentarian Thomas?
Thank you, Madam President. I have a question for you, ma'am, and I want you to understand that this definitely puts us in a very hard place. We do have a duty to protect the citizens and as well as the animals. We consider all animals, citizens as well here in our parish. Outside of what was recommended to you when the dangerous dog decision was made, and let me say this, it's not to say that we will accept or deny the appeal, but I want you to focus more on assuring this body what you are prepared to do in explicit detail. I'm talking kennels, whatever you need to do to ensure that nothing like this happened. It's important for you to understand that we have a duty to protect human life as well from, from, from any further attack. Can you please, and I implore you to make your case to this body of what you intend to do if this appeal was approved or denied? What do you, what did you, what are you prepared to do to ensure the safety of others?
I would do anything to make sure that they're safe and Lucy's safe because I understand that their safety goes hand in hand. As far as, like, even, even if she goes in the, even when she goes in the backyard to go to the bathroom, if, if we have to put a muzzle on her, even so she can step foot in her own backyard. We already put up a fence around the front door so that she can't get out that way again. And then we have the fence down the driveway. We check the fence regularly. She's not a digger. She's a runner. So I understand that it's my responsibility to make sure she's exercised properly. But I can't take her up and down the street, so I have to make sure that I, in the backyard playing with her more. And I'm sorry, I just.
Thank you. That concludes my question.
Thank you. Vice President Ken Emerson.
I'd like to move if we uphold the decision of the board.
All right. I have a motion on the floor to uphold the decision of the board by Vice President Emerson, second by Commissioner Jean Paul Young. Vice President Emerson, would you like to speak on your motion? Commissioner Grayson and Blake?
I have a question. Yep. When y'all picked Lucy up and brought her in, was she, how was she?
The first time or the second time? We picked her up.
Both, both times.
The second time they actually brought her in, because she was not, she was not there when we responded to the.
Then you brought her in, how was she?
She's, she's fine with people, but as she stated, um, that breed of dog, uh, sometimes larger dogs just have a prey drive. Every dog that she's attacked has been under thirty pounds or so. I mean, one of them was a poodle. I think the one that died is the poodle. Uh, one was like a beagle mix.
Did she show signs of being dog aggressive?
Of animal aggression?
Or was she, like, the reason why I'm asking is if the dogs muzzled? But I still don't understand how it, it went so quickly to this.
Because when they got out in January, they attacked two dogs. One died. It was evident that the dogs were running at large, and it was evident that the dogs were a problem. Instead of going through the Animal Services Board to deem the dogs dangerous, I told the officers, I say, well, hey, if they go ahead and deem them dangerous, we can go ahead and get them on the schedule, get them fixed. They can fix their yard and they can have their dogs back. Now, even when we bypassed the board, if the owner agrees, we still explain what a dangerous dog means. When the dog got out the second time and didn't have a collar on, that's part of the, that's part of it right there. The dog's supposed to have that collar on at all times so somebody can know, like, what is this yellow and red reflective collar doing on this dog rushing at me and my animal? Maybe they will be more mindful to, you know, try to get away from that particular dog. So we didn't, we didn't skip many steps. We explained that if the dog is observed at large or if they're involved in any other incidents, it can be automatically upgraded to vicious. And in this case, the dog got out, another animal was attacked. So it's, you know, I don't want to wait until, you know, something worse happens.
Okay. All right. Uh, Commissioner Jean Paul Young?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, it is super, super sad when a dog gets hurt or killed, and it is super sad when a dog has to be put down. And it is also very, very sad when people lose their dogs, and it is very, very sad when people fall in love with dogs that are dangerous. But this dog is a killer, and attacking a person's dog is very, very close to attacking a person. I know. And people are not safe with dogs like this around in any district. And that's why I think the dog is vicious, and we should uphold the decision of the board. And it's very sad.
Thank you, Commissioner Young. I agree, this is um a very tough decision for me personally. I understand what it's like to love a dog and to have a dog that is vicious like that. Um, my first responsibility is to protect our citizens as, as well as those other animals. And um, for that reason, I will be in support of this motion. Seeing no other discussion? Please vote.
And Commissioner Greg Young? Okay, and that motion does carry with eleven in support, one in opposition. And that uh brings us to the end of your new business section, and we are now at communicates and uh communicates and committee reports. And thank you, that is a, if you're wondering what we were just doing, we're trying to get uh the appellant a, a letter of decision so that um she can have that for her records right away. Um, and that is, uh, that brings us to communicates and reports. I'm sorry.